Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. We're calling the January 14th, 2025 Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. It is, I can't even see the clock on here.
6:32.
6:32. All councils are present except for Council Boardland. She's not on Zoom, is she?
No.
Okay. So, onto our first item, Calendar and Communications. Councilor Merritt, do you have anything you'd like to share? I think Councilor Merritt is trying to get hooked up. Do you have anything you would like to share?
Nothing other than what we just mentioned about the bamboo at the bottom of Fort Hill. I just would like to the town manager, if we could have somebody look into that growth of bamboo at the bottom of Fort Hill and the direction it's growing. I've had advice from a horticulturist that I know and trust, and he said that once it reaches Fort Hill Brook, it can get involved in the water and flow down the brook to other areas.
All right. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right. Councilor Pacina.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Councilor Russk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Representative Christine Conley, who recently resigned from her position. Due to this, well, I just want to say thank you. She's done a great job for our district, and we appreciate all that she's done for Groton. There is a special election that will be on February 25th. Early voting will be February 20th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and this is for districts three, four, and five, which is the city of Groton Municipal Building, Mary Morrison School, and School Administration Building. So if you vote at any of those three sites, that is your district. That is it.
Thank you. Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing other than just to keep the citizens of LA in our thoughts and all of what they're going through. And I have a daughter in the middle of it, so it's kind of pertinent and pay a lot of attention to it. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilor McBride.
Thank you. Our regular correspondence from residents over the last week. I also did receive a few phone calls from residents who wanted to discuss the council's inaction regarding Jeffrey Pritchard's appointment. I also attended the monthly SCAR meeting January 8th, and the Groton Heights Property Sale Review Committee meeting held on January 9th and January 13th. And I'll defer to Committee Chair Parker if she would like to provide any more details regarding those meetings. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Giaske?
Now, you, Madam Mayor. As Councilor Russk stated earlier, thank you to Representative Christine Conley. And I also got sworn in as a justice of the peace earlier in January. So, if you're looking to get married, I am. Can do it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To follow up, yes, I received communications, email communications. We did have our property sale review committee meetings on January 9th and the 13th. I'm going to actually turn it over to our coordinator, because we will be talking about the town of properties as an agenda item tonight. Those meetings are posted online, and further details will be coming forth later on. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Council Boardland?
Thank you. Yeah, I just also too want to thank Chris Conley for her service. She was in my district at one point, and then I got redistricted and went into Bumgardner. So I had her for a short time, and it was very wonderful. And I know she did a lot for New London, so very excited for her on her new adventure and thankful for the time and service that she has done. I had on here about the voting, so that's great that it was already announced. What else do I have? Good luck to all the kids back to semester, you know, back to college. I too also was sworn as a justice of the peace, so pretty excited about that. Something I've always wanted to do, thought it would be great in the military community, so very happy about that. So I guess I'll be sharing that with Dan. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll be at the same wedding one day. Who knows? I don't know. And what else? Did get some calls and some correspondence about people concerned with on the school property, some shelters that were found possibly being inhabited by folks who currently don't have a proper residence or a permanent residence. In light of that whole police thing that happened, also concerns in general with homeless population, calls from concerns of like, what can Groton do to help, as well as to make sure our schools are more safe on the grounds, who's checking them on the regular basis. So I did forward all those concerns over to Superintendent Austin, and asked, you know, how do we conduct, you know, making sure on our town properties that aren't being fully used on any given day? You know, I know on my little property, I can see all of it, so I know what's going on on my personal property. But when you have acres of land that butt up further into the woods that are, you know, five, 10, 20 acres, you might not know what's going on on the other end. So, in light of that, but a lot of people just concerned about how do we in Groton help? You know, we do not have a homeless shelter here. You know, the closest one is New London, and we are seeing that. The areas of concern, I've seen my whole life growing up here in the woods in that particular area. And then I think Town Manager Burt had sent me a couple of text messages because I had a couple of questions. But definitely concerned for the welfare, well-being of our community, as well as the folks that, you know, there's definitely a concern. And, you know, Town Manager Burt, I don't want to speak for him, but he did state that they do go out when they notice that there are, you know, encampments or housing and try to offer assistance, but some people do refuse. So, again, if there is a concern to the community, please reach out, I guess, to the town manager through the mayor. If people have concerns about these, if they're on private property, what should someone do? I guess that's the question that people are asking me.
Well, if it's on private property, then the owner would call the police department.
So if it's on private property, but some people don't even know it's on their property, like, we don't know who owns the property. So reach out to the town or the police department, or how do they?
Good place to start with the police. They'll work with the department as to figure which, which property it's on.
Okay. And then through the mayor, the last question people had was, what do we do? Do we go out and just offer assistance, or try to get them homes? Like, how do we, what's our town process? And I said I wasn't very clear on it, and I would ask. That's it. That's all I have.
Do you want to make that?
Go ahead.
Yes. You may recall, our biggest issue had been over by Thomas Road. We had that long-term encampment. First of all, we work with Homeless Hospitality Center. They go out every week to, they scout around and try to find any homeless unhoused people. I guess that's the correct term. They meet with them. They offer them, there's usually ways to get them into housing, get them other types of treatment. Oftentimes, they turn it down, but they go every week when there's winter, when it's, you know, it's really cold out, they go check on them. We also work with Malta on that additionally. But with Thomas Road, we hit it, we repeatedly went out there, went out there, went out there, and we're able to get all of them to accept help and new placements and housed.
May I ask a question?
You have a point of information?
Point of information. Wasn't, didn't we have it all by faith Lutheran?
I can't hear you.
That's the one, yeah. There's no one over there.
I'm sorry, Councilor Parker, I couldn't hear your question.
Oh, it was, I was asking, was it by the church? Because that's not-
The High Rock.
The High Rock? That's-
Yeah. Yeah. Somebody, people were writing on like Thomas Road, it's really by Alpha High Rock. Yeah. Yeah, that is no longer there.
Okay. Thank you.
And we do, for instance, you know, that had been there for many, many years, and so we hired a company to completely clean everything up and make sure there was no trace left.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank Representative Chris Conley. She has been a great representative for us in Groton and has worked diligently for us, and I do appreciate her service to our community. Back to the topic of unhoused people in our community, there has been discussion at this council about potentially putting an ordinance to, for unhoused people on town property, and if we want to make that an ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Burt? Because this was something supported by, I also believe, Homeless Hospitality Center in Malta, because their goal is to get people in housing and not to be living unhoused, is that right?
Right. To put, you know, some mild pressure to, you know, to prompt people to receive help. Yes. You could do an ordinance for town properties. If they're already there on non-signed ones, I mean, if, can't do it at a hall, but if you're on some open space we had, you'd have to work with them until it would, until they were gone, and then that would get posted as no longer allowed. So there are some caveats to it, but yes.
So, discount-
Another option is, of course, criminalization, which I'm not endorsing.
Right. So this council could actually bring forward an ordinance if we so chose to keep unhoused people off of town property, if that was the case.
Yes. And then we would go around and actually post signs. It's hard, we have a lot of little properties, hundreds, but we would do what we could, yes.
All right. I appreciate your information. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Approval of Minutes. Councilor Parker, would you like to take that?
Ms. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of December 10th, 2024. I so move-
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Giaske. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, not seeing any hands. Let's take a vote on our minutes from December 10th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Council Boardland, are you in favor?
No, I'm for the a.
Thank you. Passes nine, zero, two, zero. And let me, I hadn't mentioned this, but Council Boardland did arrive at 6:35, so I just wanted to note that. Up to the new business, 2025-21 Sustainable Connecticut Award Presentation. Who do we have here this evening? Come on down. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Good evening. Megan Granato. I'm the Town Sustainability and Resilience Manager.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Leclerc, and I'm the Executive Director with Sustainable CT.
Would you like to give a synopsis of your presentation?
Yep. We have Jessica here to present an overview and an award for our most recent Sustainable Connecticut certification.
All right.
All right. Well, I want to thank the council for the invitation to participate this evening. It's my privilege to present to you this plaque, and I will bring it up there so you can get a better look at it. But Groton has been very active in Sustainable CT and highly successful. So I just want to say, we did make formal awards to our full 2024 cohort in November of last year. Unfortunately, no one from the town was able to join, but it is my honor to be here tonight with you to recognize you publicly for your achievements in our program. So for those of you who might be unfamiliar with Sustainable CT, we are a statewide municipal certification program intended to help communities advance their overall sustainability. And we do look broadly at sustainability. We think about clean air, clean land, clean water. We think about transportation, affordable housing, homelessness prevention, germane to tonight's conversation. We think about supporting the local economy and supporting local arts and more. We have a menu of actions at the core of our program that communities like Groton work through. You take on the actions that speak to you as a community, earn points, and you can use those points towards certification. Groton has four certifications now. So you have been bronze in 2019, 2021, and 2024. And in 2024, you got certified twice. So you moved up from bronze to silver using both of our certification cycles, our spring and fall cycle. So really, an amazing amount of work that's happened by the town staff, by community members to really pull together and showcase the sustainability efforts that are happening in town. We do offer three levels of certification, bronze, silver, and gold. And as you move up levels, things get a little bit harder. So it's really remarkable to see your town move from bronze to silver in just a matter of months. I want to just highlight a couple of areas from your application that we really thought were amazing. It was hard. This was a task, because you've done a lot of good work. I probably don't need to tell you, but I'm going to take this, this time at the mic to showcase from our perspective, some of the things that we thought were really exceptional. And again, there's, there's too many to count, but I just want to highlight a few. So you've created a business resiliency toolkit that helps build the resilience of your town's business community to the climate impacts with the Stay Afloat Flood Preparedness Toolkit. That's one. If I can get my hands to work. You've created Clean Waterways, a government-access TV show centered on helping to protect Connecticut waters by reducing non-point source stormwater pollution. Produced by Groton Municipal Television in partnership with Save the Sound, the effort was initiated by the town to support community environmental education. You are acquiring new open space, like the Wolfbrook property. You're assessing your vulnerability to the effects of climate change through creating plans like the Downtown Mystic Resiliency and Sustainability Plan. And just in this room in June of 2024, we had a community resilience building workshop, and I had the opportunity to come and participate in the session and hear more about some of the work that's going on in town. The town has partnered with Stonington on a downtown Mystic parking study. The study was completed in 2021, and a public workshop was held later that year to share results. You have two community gardens with a total of 99 plots available to residents, so people have the ability to grow their own healthy food. It's really, that's amazing. During the summer of 2023, you investigated the town's vulnerability to extreme heat and developed actions to increase the town's resilience, developing many educational materials for the community. You've created an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. You've expanded the town's housing rehabilitation program. And as discussed tonight, you have granted funds to the New London Homeless Hospitality Center and to Always Home to provide residents with foreclosure and eviction education, as well as supporting low and moderate income families with financial assistance. So kudos to you. I could go on. I'm going to stop here, because I know you have a full meeting ahead of you. I would like to congratulate you on your achievements, congratulate your staff and your sustainability team for their hard work to make this happen. Really, Groton is leading the way in the state, and we are so pleased to be able to work with you and thankful for your ongoing participation in the program, and we look forward to working with you down the road. So, I have this plaque. I'm not sure what is the best way to give it to you, to the town manager? Hold it up. What would you like?
It is up to you. I think the town manager would be fine. Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Council Boardland?
I think it's wonderful. You know, as a person who got involved because of sustainability and really looking at our, you know, climate and concern for the welfare and well-being of our community, from the folks that are struggling to keep their houses, to folks who are trying to keep their houses in other ways from weather, and those that can't afford to keep their houses, like, it's two extremes. But I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, mention Zell Severs, who passed away not that long ago, who really set the tone and started the Resilience Sustainability Task Force long before people thought it was even cool, and really pushed to hire someone to work in that field, and all the men and women that are community that were part of that. Unfortunately, that group was recently not, they didn't want to bring in the volunteers back for whatever reason. Not something I supported, but I, I do think that, that we wouldn't be where we are without the hard work and education of all those people who really believed in having a resilience sustainability person, and they came here and advocated to have who you have before us today. So I thank you for that, and I think this is a great step, but I think there's room to grow. I know when we were looking at the Wolfbrook property, there were folks at the time that didn't think that that was in the best interest of our tax dollars, and others that, you know, what you, my belief is, you cannot get back land once you let it go. So I just think this is a great stepping stone, and I hope that we grow even more. So thank you for this.
You're very welcome.
And thank you to Zell and his team and group that have really championed the way, and to our new resilience sustainability person who wouldn't be here without their, their efforts. Thank you.
There's plenty of space left on the plaque. I'll just put that out there.
Anybody else? All right. Well, I would also like to thank you. I know this council, over the years, has worked towards resiliency, sustainability through our community. In the actions of this council, we have created that resiliency task force, which has ran its course. We hired a resiliency person to be on staff. We made a commitment to our community that we would try and do resiliency and sustainability in our thought processes when we make decisions. We do support Always Home, which we did give them additional money this past year to help because of the situations that's going on with our cannabis money. The items that you list, many of them are from our new resiliency sustainability manager that the council had passed and chose to hire and make it her part of our community, and the importance of that. So I think it's wonderful. And acquired space, yes, we, as a council, have acquired space, and I think we are now currently close to 30% in our community of open space, which is a very large portion, and it is achievement. And I think it's wonderful for our community. So I thank you, and I thank you for this award for our community and for coming and presenting it to us tonight. So thank you both very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is 2025-19 Sustainability Update. All right, we have somebody else coming on down. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to introduce yourself, and give us a synopsis on your presentation, please? Thank you.
Sure. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development.
Megan Granato, Sustainability Resilience Manager. And I just wanted to give you a brief update on a couple of the initiatives that we have going on right now. So with that, I have a few slides. We'll keep it short and snappy. While John's pulling it up, I can just go ahead and start speaking, because I wanted to start by adding a few comments to what Jessica had presented. And she did a terrific job of highlighting a lot of the exciting things that the town has gotten credit for through Sustainable Connecticut. But wanted to take a moment to really stress the fact that it is such a town-wide effort, and I'm so appreciative of the efforts of town staff, town leadership, and a number of the decisions you all have made have made this certification possible as well. There are a number of the ARPA funding allocations that got a Sustainable Connecticut points, especially as it related to topics like affordable housing and homelessness prevention. But really, just wanted to reflect on the fact, it's not, it's not just what people kind of stereotypically think of environmental work that counts toward this program. As Jessica said, it is a very sort of like broad view of sustainability. And so I am working with colleagues from the rest of our cohort, and Office of Planning and Development Services, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Human Services, Groton Public Library, Finance, and all of them are contributing to efforts, helping me wrangle documentation. I will say the standards that Sustainable Connecticut sets are extremely high. So it's not just me going into an online portal saying, hey, we did these things. They want to see documentation and proof of what we've accomplished. So it is very rigorous, and everyone has been so gracious in helping provide the, the follow-through and then the documentation that we need to get these points. So it was really exciting, reaching silver certification for the very first time. And we're going to try to keep going and certainly keep that up. And like Jessica said, there's plenty of room on the plaque. So-
Can I just ask if the manager could just enlarge that so we can see it better, please? The whole, like, slideshow screen to fit the whole screen?
John, do you have any-
If you go ahead and-
Put it right there.
Here. There's full screen of mine.
Okay. Let's just go to start slideshow.
On here. Looks good on my TV, no?
Okay, great. John, if you could forward, I think, two slides. Yep. One of the major programs we're working on right now is Heat Smart Groton. And this is a public education and outreach campaign, trying to connect people to existing programs and rebates that can help them make their homes more energy efficient. This is so important for a number of reasons, right? We know that people in our community are struggling from high energy costs and bills. There's also an environmental impact of energy use. The great thing is that there's a number of programs that can help people understand ways that they can improve their home, and that there are funding programs to further support that work. So with this campaign, we are partnering with People's Action for Clean Energy or Pace-
Just a moment. I hate to interrupt. There's something crawling in the ceiling, like, pretty big. Sorry, I'm very distracted.
No, it's okay. I heard that as well.
Just here, or do you see something?
Let's just-
That we can do right the second.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, if it falls through, it will.
Well, we'll have quite the show.
Yeah. Might want to take care of that tomorrow, if you could. We can put that on the list. We can call the news. Just make sure we take whatever's out sustainably.
There you go. We can call animal control right now.
Yeah. Actually, we do have animal control next door.
They need to put a trail. It's probably a squirrel.
All right. You could continue. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
It was quite a distraction.
We're nothing if not adaptable.
Something absolutely new that has happened here.
Yeah. Never a dull moment. So, yeah, we're partnering with Pace. We're also partnering with the city and Groton Utilities. Groton Utilities, as well as Eversource, have programs that start with what's called a HES. A HES is a Home Energy Solutions Audit. For Groton Utilities customers, this is a service that's provided at zero cost. It has over a $200 value, because when the contractor comes in to perform the HES audit, they are checking the safety of your current HVAC system, they're sealing air leaks, they're sealing ductwork, and if the homeowner is interested, they can install water-saving measures and also upgrade light bulbs. So it has a really significant value, but then from there, the contractor will also make recommendations for that particular property if there's things that could be done to improve the energy efficiency. That might be adding insulation to the attic. It could be retrofitting with heat pumps, smart thermostats, heat pump water heaters. And Groton Utilities has rebate programs for all of these technologies. Currently, Groton Utilities heat pump rebate is believed to be the best in the state. So, really, the entire intent of this campaign is just to make sure people know about this, make sure they're aware of these programs so that they can take advantage of them. Like I said, Eversource has something very similar. It's through the Energize CT program. With Eversource, unless you meet certain income eligibility requirements, there is a fee. However, for lower-income individuals, that fee is waived. And so what we have done so far is we sent out a first batch of letters targeted to homeowners in Groton that we believed, based on factors like the age of the residents, were most likely to benefit from these kinds of upgrades in this type of service. We did an event at Groton Public Library, and we've also launched a website. This can be confusing stuff. I think people, you know, even, is it Groton Utilities? Is it Eversource? Is that Energize CT? There's a lot of buzzwords. The whole point of the website is to streamline the communication. So anyone can go to it, has the information they need, and they can kind of filter down to the programs that are specific to them. We've had a really tremendous response so far. We sent out letters at the beginning of November, and typically Groton Utilities told me they get between three and seven inquiries a month for a HES audit. Since we sent the letters out in the beginning of November, they've received 92, of which they have completed 26 HES audits and have 45 additional ones scheduled. So we're going to keep rolling with this. There's going to be a second event focusing on insulation, held at the city municipal building in March. And then we'll likely do a third batch of letters. Groton Utilities is going to be doing the second batch. We'll do a third, trying to reach out to Eversource customers in the spring, and we'll do another event focused on heat pumps. And the group is also looking at how to build from here. So one of the topics we've been talking about are barriers to this type of work. So when the consultant comes in and they do the HES audit, they might find things in a home, like mold, vermiculite, novantube wiring, that are going to bar the people or make it more complicated to be able to maybe put in a heat pump or other technologies. So we're considering putting together a grant proposal that could help with some of the bridge funding, to be able to provide that supplement to our community members. If you could forward this slide. Wanted to give a quick plug. We have our Second Annual Youth Climate Summit coming up at the end of February. And by we, I want to make it clear that the planning for this event, last year and this year, is led by the students of the Marine Science Magnet High School Environmental Club. They are tremendous. Youth climate summits are for the youth by the youth, and I could not be more proud of the leadership that these students take in determining every aspect of the day. As an adult, I'm just- As an adult, I'm just there to support, make connections, and help logistics and administration. They selected the theme this year of living sustainably. And we're going to cover topics like renewable energy, transportation, sustainable design, and indigenous perspectives on sustainability. We are trying to go bigger and better this year. So last year, at the first summit, we had approximately 80 students from four regional high schools and we're hoping to get closer to 150 students. This year, it increased the number of students and schools participating. And wanted to stress that that in large part is due to both the council approving a small budget line item last year that supports the summit and Representative Bumgardner, for a second year in a row, has also provided state funding to help support this. So I will be following up with a formal invitation to you all. It would be really fantastic if even one of you was able to just pop in on the day to see it. I think you'd really enjoy getting to check it out. And our last slide.
Point of information. What was the date again on that?
The 25th of February.
27.
25th.
25th.
25th. Yep, 25.
Thank you.
Last few additional updates. As the mayor just mentioned, part of your work as a council has been working to integrate sustainability across town functions. And you just saw how we're doing that through the Sustainable Connecticut program. Something else that we are doing as a pilot this year is adding sustainability review back to the CIP process. So this was something that was done before I started here. And CIP being Capital Improvement Project or Plan, for those listening at home. And when I say pilot year, you know, we communicated to all the department heads that my role in the town is assisting with this. So I think part of why it maybe wasn't successful previously was there wasn't a lot of direction given, there was no one checking that work, no one providing input and comments. And that gets to be my role and John as well. So we asked the department heads, you know, we gave them some guidance of things to keep in mind. We asked them to provide draft comments that then we'll be taking a look at and helping, you know, improve, add to before they are finalized and delivered to you. So just wanted to give you a heads up as something new in this year's budget process that you'll be seeing. We are very close to announcing the consultant team selected for the Climate Ready Groton Plan. We are just waiting for the heads up from the state grant managers, but we completed interviews last week. We're very excited. Work is going to start soon on FEMA's Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, or BRIC, Direct Technical Assistance Program. This is something, it might sound familiar because we sent an update, I think it was in February. This is something we applied for on behalf of the town in partnership with the city and Groton Long Point. It is a federal program through FEMA where FEMA and its consultant team work hand-in-hand with us to identify our local projects that are good fits for their funding programs. And although this isn't a grant, I can't tell you the value of this in terms of their expertise because these programs can be challenging and thorny and even costly to apply. I like to give the example that the FEMA funding programs require benefit cost analyses to complete. If you have to have a contractor do that for you, that's going to run you several thousands of dollars. Through this program, FEMA's consultants will be doing that for us. So we are thrilled about this. It's been a little slow going because as you know, FEMA's had its hands full with a number of disasters, very unfortunately, which has delayed rolling out this program. But that's something that we're going to be picking back up hopefully in the next month or two. As previously reported, we have two Long Island Sound Futures Fund grants. One focuses on institutionalizing permeable pavement in town operations. For that one, we did a competitive bid process and hired CDM Smith. A real strength of that selection is CDM Smith is also our municipal stormwater MS4 consultant right now. So we get to bridge across those two programs in a way I think is going to be really successful. We also have that project looking at the crossing of River Road, Crossing of Haley's Brook by River Road. That's the culvert that had massive flood damage in 2010. It's also biologically an area of concern for fish passage. We completed our competitive review process and selected Princeton Hydro as the consultants and we are wrapping up final contract negotiations on that one. And last and arguably the most exciting, for me personally at least, is we are able to hire and onboard our new sustainability and resilience specialist, Alexis Torres. She's tremendous. She came on in the fall. She's a Yukon Avery Point graduate. And she's jumped right in with thankless work doing our energy benchmarking, which is spreadsheets galore and gives us really valuable information that we can use for both facilities management and then also it feeds into our greenhouse gas inventory that we're going to be updating through our Climate Action Plan. So as you can see, lots of exciting stuff going on and plenty of other things that I didn't get to mention, but we just wanted to give you a couple of highlights since it's been a little bit of a gap since we've been here to talk to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilor Bordelon?
Is it possible to disperse those slides in an email to us just because there's some good information on there? So I do appreciate that. I know that you said you've been sending out the flyers, you know, everywhere about the HES. Is that also up on our website as well or our Facebook page, other social media blasts and posts as well? So that would be just great. But I think having that information sent to us in the packet would be great so that we can use it to, you know, send to people that we may think of interest.
Absolutely.
But thank you. I think it's great and I'm interested to hear about the culvert update on that. Definitely the climate change thing is a great thing with our youth coming up, so that's really nice. What time does it start on the 25th?
Content is going to start at 8:30. Doors are going to open at 8:00. It's going to be at the Pequot Museum in Legerd. And then the event concludes at 1:00. It's really tough when you have a lot of schools participating and all of them have slightly different schedules and you have to think about busing the kids once they get to school and then making sure they don't miss their bus home. So it's a jam-packed five or so hours.
Nice. Well, I think it opens up, you know, it sounds like it'll be a great exposure and great opportunity for learning for everybody. So with that, looking at this further, is there any initiative to do maybe a smaller scale for this for the younger children to kind of bridge that? You know, I think, I know when I was younger, you know, that reduce, reuse, recycle thing that they used to chant to us, you know? And then it just died out. All of a sudden, it was like recycled sustainability just was like, what is that? Like, and then people are now bringing it back in the last like 20 years. But is there any thoughts on maybe introducing a smaller-scale type of thing maybe around the same time or a month after for our younger students? Reason I bring that up is because I think it, you know, if we start a little earlier, we can kind of, you know, get them later, longer. Just, I don't know, just a thought, if there would be some, you know, I know other towns and other things that they used to do back in the day. They'd have like an art contest to use for their poster, you know, the younger kids would get involved with that or some other type of project that they would do, just some way to kind of bring in the younger folks.
Yeah, and actually, that's a, it's a great segue for when, after the questions conclude, we're going to talk about the Go Groton Initiative. So there's definitely, we have a number of partnerships going on with the school system. I love the idea of expanding the climate education piece into the middle school. I'm not sure about being able to pivot so quickly as this spring. But other youth climate summits nationwide have engaged both middle and high schoolers. So I think it's definitely something to think about.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you for thinking of it. I think it would be definitely, I've considered it an investment, you know, in our future and our community now. So, and the Go, you know, Groton thing is a great thing. It's unfortunate, you know, that even like with the Go Groton, that we have to think about like outside as being a thing we have to like invent again, you know? But unfortunately, that's where we are, you know? So it's, and we have to take into consideration that some folks don't have walkable neighborhoods or communities. They might live in areas that are much more densely populated and don't get the chance to explore the woods and things. So very excited for all the initiatives that you guys are doing and I think it's definitely going to help us in the long run and it's very pertinent to what's going on in our community and definitely support all the efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't see any other questions. So would you like to go on to our next item on the agenda? 2025-20 Go Get Outdoors Groton Update.
We do have a presentation for this one as well. So a great segue from Councilor Bordelon about, you know, the Go Groton program is something that we've been working with other town departments, Groton Open Space Association, Parks and Rec, you know, the Board of Ed. And a lot of it is really geared towards that youth and how we can get them back out into the outdoors, usually, you know, away from the phones and the devices and those types of things. And we wanted to just kind of go through a few of the things we're working on with that.
So just to recap, I know you've heard from us about Go Groton and then as it relates to seed funding as well. But for anyone watching at home who isn't familiar, this is an initiative with all those partners that John just mentioned. We're about a year into it. And we were selected to participate in the Nature Everywhere program through a nationwide competition. That's a program run through the Children in Nature Network with the National League of Cities in Kaboom. And through this program, we get technical support and assistance in developing a nature equity plan for all of Groton's youth. And as John was just saying, why are we doing this? Because time outside in connection with nature is so important for so many reasons. Benefits children's development, both mentally, physically, academic performance improves when kids have a connection with nature. And as we think of creating stewards who are going to be, you know, inheriting the decisions we, the results of the decisions we make from climate change, you know, it's really important that we're engaging kids as young as possible. And with that, if you could advance. And so I believe it was last March that we first talked to you about this program and we've made a lot of progress since then. We've been doing a tremendous my community outreach. So if we're building a nature equity plan, we need to understand how families, parents, and kids are or are not already connecting to nature, the tremendous open space opportunities that we have. And we're asking questions about barriers. So your point, Councilor Bordelon, if people aren't spending time outside, why is that? Is it because they don't have a walkable neighborhood? Is it because they don't have a park that's easily accessible or a park that they feel safe in? Do they lack the apparel or the gear that they need for their kids to be comfortable playing outside? These are all some of the factors that contribute. And so we did a Community Wellness Hub event. Dennison Pequot Seppos Nature Center did an awesome reptiles and raptors show. And I think that was a really great example of us trying to go out to the community, to where people already are. So holding at the Community Wellness Hub, there were a number of families there with kids in karate class who had other young children who were just waiting in the hallway. So we provided a fun activity. We got to engage with them. We provided them dinner. And in payment, asked for their thoughts. They filled out a survey, they talked to us about these issues. And it was a really fun event. We've been tabling at all of the community events that we can go to to connect people on this. And like I said, it's a combination of conversations and a survey. We do have the survey available online on the Greater Groton website. So I encourage everyone to go and check that out. And the other really important update we wanted to give is through Ural's approval of our use of the seed fund available from the Nature Everywhere program, we were able to hire four temporary part-time positions. So these are just grant-funded positions, to recap. And so their term, they'll be with us until the fall. One is a youth organizer and then we have three youth leaders. The three youth leaders are all high school students at Fitch. And so again, we want this plan to be informed about the community. And so we felt it was really important for us to have the insights of the youth. And the best way to do that is to hire youth, to talk to youth. So that's a tactic that we're taking with this. And so they just started in late December. So they're going to be onboarding, so you'll be seeing them out at community events. And we're really excited for this kind of different approach to community outreach than we've done previously. Wanted to flag for you on our final slide, what's coming up? So like I mentioned, we're going to be developing this nature equity plan. But before we do that, we are going to be developing a children's outdoor bill of rights or a COBOR for short, since we all love acronyms. So COBs are something that you'll find across the country. A lot of states have them, a lot of large cities have them. And I think why that is, is that they're a tremendous communication approach. So I can sit here and try to explain to you what a nature equity plan is and why it matters or I can point to one flyer, one page that says, this is what every kid in our community should get to do. They should all get to splash in a stream with clean water. They should all get to ride a bike. And so we've been looking at nationwide examples and we are in the process of drafting our own. That's what a lot of our outreach has been on. It's been really great to go to events and get to connect with kids about what's your favorite thing to do outside, right? So we are going to make ours, of course, Groton-specific. And that sort of creates the vision statement of Go Groton. That's the mission of what we're trying to achieve is this COBOR. And then the COBOR will provide the framework for the nature equity plan so that if we're committing, for example, that every kid should get to ride a bike, we're going to have tactics in there of how do we make sure that kids in our community have access to bikes, that they have access to safe streets to bike on, that they have sidewalks and so on and so forth, to just give you an example. So the timeline on this is really going to be ramping up. So you'll be seeing more out of us in the next few months as we continue to draft these and then be reporting back as we finalize them as well.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. A tremendous effort. And as somebody who has worked with the Go Groton and has led many of these groups through sheep mile properties, lots of five-year-olds to 10-year-olds, it's been really kind of cool to be around them. They're really interesting kids and very smart and they have really dedicated teachers. And how many of them have never been outside in the woods? I mean, a lot of them have never been outside. And one of the advantages that comes from this is that the kids come, the parents come. So very often, they'll come along too and will also have had no knowledge of our trails and our system and being out in the woods. So it's a lot of fun. They're always very energetic. They have lots of questions and depending where they are in their curriculum, they'll be asking about watersheds or dinosaurs or rocks or all kinds of stuff. So thank you for doing this and I'll be doing many more of these coming up in the spring. We have a lot more scheduled. So they're fun and I think it's a great benefit for our kids to get out there, just get out into nature. So, great job.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your support on that, leading those hikes.
Councilor Bordelon?
Thank you. Again, I think this is very vital and, you know, when I was doing something with Health Improvement Collaborative with Ledge Light a while back, we look at barriers for a lot of different things. We're looking at like weight and food insecurities and things. And with my short time living in Maine, you know, when my children were there for one school year, I was amazed. I sent my kids off to school. I thought I had the best warmest jackets, boots, and gloves because we were in Maine and you know you got to go to L.B. And I thought for sure that they wouldn't get outside. And they looked at me and said, they called me up and were like, Mrs. Bordelon, where are their bibs? And I was like, snow bibs? And I was like, oh, yeah, we're in Maine. Because those kids up there, because the daylights, the days are smaller and it's colder up there, there's no barriers. If there's two feet of snow, those kids play in the snow. They let them sled in the snow. They can make snowballs as long as they're not throwing them snowmen. And we had come from here where you were confined to at recess, you know, just the concrete area that was shoveled and you couldn't touch the snow and nobody could play in the snow because, you know, everyone didn't have that gear. And, you know, it was just a different thought process. And it brought me back to like living in Maine, which is how it used to be. It was like, let the kids be kids, let them play, let them get wet, let them do all this. So it is very vital. And what's some of these barriers that we looked at, we looked at childhood obesity and things, is not being able to get out and stuff with, you know, even now, it's dark at 4:30. Most parents average work till 5:00 or 6:00. Kids come from school, if it rained that day, they didn't get outside at their, you know, their recess. They come home, they're doing homework, parents get in and they're not allowed out, you know, unsupervised. So that is a barrier. It is a barrier that, you know, we don't think about. It's just different than, I mean, I was all over everywhere, you know, you were allowed to ride your bike here, there, and everywhere. So it's just, it is a change. And it's like, how do we feel more comfortable getting back and finding more outdoor activities in the winter when it's darker early or in different things? Paquonic Plains Park, you know, putting those solar lights there, one of the things that I, you know, actually at the time, I was walking a lot with Mr. Jones down there and, you know, I met a couple constituents and the biggest complaint was there was nowhere to go to walk because they didn't live in walkable neighborhoods and it got dark early. And they got out of work at 5:00 and they couldn't afford a gym membership and having an outdoor space, not everybody wants to go to a gym, right? They want to be outside. And looking at COVID, we realized that that barrier, no one wanted to be inside during COVID with everyone breathing on them in a gym. And that spot is great. I've used it. I mean, I got to work at 4:30, sometimes I pop down there right when it's getting dark, do a few laps and then head home and use my equipment. It is absolutely wonderful to have. And so thinking outside the box like that and having other activities, but, you know, And so thinking outside the box like that and having other activities, and not being afraid to have evening activities for children in the dark. And they had this one light everywhere where they had these light-up balls at a field, had kids outside kicking them and running. And it's just, how do we get back to that? And it's amazing that it's a policy that we have to think about because it used to be just part of my nature, like growing up. But we've changed, right? We have duly working families now more than ever, and people that are home to watch these kids while the light is still out. So I thank you for all that you guys are doing, and I think this is very vital to our community and so important for our health, welfare, and well-being and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Gornano and Director Reiner. Just a quick question to the mayor. You mentioned that you were outside of the karate classes. That's how you were taking in the data. Are you doing any follow-up with that data and to see if the Grotten Go initiative is producing people to go outside more?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the data that we're collecting through that survey, which is the same one that's still available online, that's directly informing the plan. So in that, we're asking, sort of getting a temperature on, like I said, are your kids spending time outside? And if they're not, why? And what ideas do you have? But I love the idea, with any good plan, it's only as good as the follow-through and making sure that it's accomplishing something. So I love the idea of finding ways to continue to evaluate over time because this is something that we are committed to. So although we're going to be developing the plan in the short term, then we switch immediately to implementation. And actually, through this Nature Everywhere program, we have immediately a grant opportunity for implementation that opens up once our plan is complete. So as we start to move on, and I will say that will be the second, we actually already submitted a smaller grant to Connecticut DOT for bike funding. So we're already rolling on this, no pun intended. But evaluating progress over time is going to be really important. And I think it's great that we have such a strong partner with the school system because they can be part of that. They have the connection with so many youth, not all the youth, but a lot of youth in our community. And so I think there's some interesting ways through that partnership that we could look at that.
Yeah, just to kind of, I think it'd be seeing if the changes that we're implementing, people are going outside more, I think is the overall goal of it. And I would want to know if the goal was complete. So I just leave that with you, and I yield back, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelon?
I just had one other thing. I just, if I didn't bring up, as a person who lived in military housing, as a local person that was a military family, and then with two sons that are now in the military, are we reaching out to the military rec center there, the youth center, as well as they also have the daycare that's there? They might have some ways to, I just think it's important that we engage all of Grotten, which really makes the Grotten submarine capital. And I think that rec facility has a youth program there as well. There might be some people that want to get involved. And they have a very dynamic teen program that meets there that my children have used. And they do some trips. I mean, they have a really robust kind of program. And maybe there's some way to include them in there, or there might be some data to be collected just from that as well, just kind of thinking of all levels.
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up. The youth organizer we have, so that position is overseeing, working hand-in-hand with the three high school students I mentioned. Tamara Berry is our youth organizer. She is a member of the military community. And so she has the connections, and that was something that was really compelling. We were going through the hiring process, was the fact that she did have the connections to that community. And so she is working with the sub-bass liaison and hopefully setting up an event, maybe sometime this spring. She spent a day tabling outside the commissary. So she has, I think, a really good insight, like you said, on the right pathways to make sure that we're connecting with that part of our community, for sure.
And the last community that I think is very important is making sure that we're getting, I mean, maybe like Branford Manor, looking at the lower-income families as well in that area. They have a rec community center. You talk about barriers like jackets or boots or things, bikes. You know, I know from some of the folks I spoke to in there, they just don't have a place to really store the bikes and things. So just really making sure that we're looking at all different parts of the community, which I think, and also very diverse populations. Overwhelmingly, as a lot of the surveys I love to get involved with, overwhelmingly, minorities aren't being surveyed. And I think that is a huge part. I know our Grotton Public Schools identifies as being like 50-something percent of people of all different backgrounds. So that's a huge percent of folks. So when you move that into our town, it's a strong representation. So that's just not black, African-American. It's every diverse population. So folks of all different backgrounds, color. And making sure we're looking at indigenous folks, native communities that do inhabit our areas, and really speaking with them. So I just hope that we are kind of getting a good sample and really, there's nothing worse than when you have a sample size and you look and you don't see the demographics being represented. So I'm happy to hear the military's there and hoping that some more youth and minorities are being represented. Thank you.
Yeah. If I could respond to that, they're going to think that I planted my questions with you. So one of the major initiatives that we've been working on planning, that Tamara's been spending most of her time on, is a family day at Branford Manor. The date is not secure yet, so I don't want to publicize it. But specifically working with Branford Manor to organize an event that's all about this, provide a hiking opportunity through GOSSA. We've purchased mini binoculars for the kids to be able to observe wildlife during that hike and then have as a takeaway. Community organizations have already been reached out to about tabling. And the grant that was already submitted by the partnership was a Connecticut DOT. I forget exactly which program it was, but it was a micro grant requesting funds for bikes, bike helmets, and bike locks with a specific intent of doing a program through Branford Manor to make sure that we're connecting those kids with that gear.
And lastly, one of my other big initiatives that I'm still thinking about how to incorporate here is I think swimming, the right to learn how to swim should be a public health concern, especially in coastal communities where overwhelmingly we're seeing coastal flooding. When you look at Hurricane Katrina, overwhelmingly a large population of minorities and folks down there that didn't know how to swim. And every year, someone unfortunately passes at Ocean Beach because of not having the access or the funds perhaps, or the knowledge, or I don't know what the barrier could be, but it's endless. And a lot of communities are opening up things. I think New London got some funding one year where they were giving grants that helped for swim classes. So this outdoor enrichment, you talk about splashing in the ocean, the restreams, the right to, people don't realize that that's a privilege for some, and making sure. And I know our local high school doesn't have a pool, and some other states, swimming is part of the gym curriculum, believe it or not. So anyway, just another thing that maybe not be part of this grant, but maybe down hope to come, that we're making sure that our town has the access for students to have the right to learn how to swim.
Thank you.
As a public health concern. Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just get ready to ask, thank you for both your presentations. I believe you guys had an event at Branford Manor for the Christmas holiday, so you have been doing some outreach there. So it's not just one side of town, it's across the town, especially since you have people from, young leaders from Fitch being involved. And thank you for making sure that somebody local. I just wanted to say thank you. And I know that you guys have been doing stuff, and you guys do send us the email newsletters and everything, and keep us up to date with everything. So if you have the flyers, let us know, and I'll post. And I know you have it on your website. It's just sometimes easier to get it from your actual picture. So thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Just a quick one. The kids love the Merlin Bird app. You mentioned birding, the Merlin Bird app. Just gets them really excited. It's really easy to use. Anybody who's leading those groups of kids, so just FYI.
You're all set? All right. Well, I also want to thank you. But I do have some questions. Are you the lead on the Go Grotten?
There really is no lead. It's a core group of five people, of which John and I are two of the five.
As well as a couple reps from the school department. There was a rep from Parks and Rec, and also somebody from GOSSA.
So between the Youth Student Summit and Go Grotten, and there's a lot of youth initiatives, and you spoke at length of them today, how much of your time are you spending with this?
It'd be hard to put a percentage on it. I mean, honestly, not a large period amount of time with the youth climate summits. Maybe once a month for part of the year. I'm attending meetings with the students, then doing emails, connecting them with potential panelists, those sorts of functions. And with Go Grotten, we meet on a monthly basis to make sure that everything's moving forward. But then between the five of us and then other people in our networks, the work kind of goes on from there. So I mean, it's not an inconsequential amount of time, but it's certainly not anywhere near the majority of my work.
All right. Because I just honestly, maybe I'm a different generation, but I don't understand why kids aren't just outside doing things like as I was when I was a kid and running and doing things. So I didn't know we really had to get basically a committee together to do this in this day and age, I guess. So I guess I'm a little surprised with that. But I will say that you've given us an update on sustainability updates and our award and get outdoors. I will say there are people in our community that are asking me at least, they're looking for solutions to some of the hard issues. And I'm not trying to minimize any of this, but they're looking for like, what are the solutions when it comes to flooding and fire and drought and hurricanes and water rise and the heat issues? And they're looking for this. And they want to know how we're working on the resiliency and sustainability when these type of things happen, and how we're going to bounce back, and what are our solutions? And I know you're working on some very large grants, and you're trying to put in, you know, you're doing outreach, and you're trying to put together this program to respond to these grants. But I do know that people are looking for like actual items, what we should be working for. And I think some of those are the things that at least, I don't know, I can't speak for my other councilors, but I'm looking to hear about. I want to hear about those things. Like when we found out the flooding in Mystic and the valves weren't, we didn't have the valves properly. And we found out about that, it's like, these are very easy fixes to help the situation. These are the type of things we're looking for in our community. And then with the water rise and what's going on, like you're talking about on River Road, I can't speak for anybody else, but these are the tough issues that I want to hear about myself. So not that I'm minimizing this, I just think as a council, these are the type of things that I would like to hear about.
Yeah, and that's great. Sorry, not to interrupt you if you were still going. That's great feedback, and I'd be happy to come back and talk about those things. When we give updates, we try to hit the balance of what's sort of like new and topical and snappy. A lot of those infrastructure programs and projects, they take much longer, they're highly technical. So it's great feedback for us to hear that you would like more of that insight because we certainly have content that we could be telling you about. We're contributing, helping public work select contractors for several infrastructure projects that are going to directly address flooding. This FEMA program is going to be essentially streamlining the pathway for us to get large sources of federal funding. I mean, the BRIC program, that's multi-millions of dollars. But the trick is that they want big projects. So we can't turn to them and say, oh, you know, we have one flooding issue over here. They want massive-scale projects. And we can only do that through a lot of collaboration and a lot of investigation to get to that point of the application. Once you're ready to apply, it means that you have all your i's dotted and your t's crossed. So those things are definitely in the works. It's just sometimes the lead-up to them is a little bit longer. I think a big piece of this puzzle as well is that I applied for the grant to do our townwide climate plan shortly after I started. We just got that grant encumbered in August. We just made the selection for the consultant this last week. And so as we've talked about with you before, all of these funding programs want to see where you've done that prior planning. And we have to do that planning, even though some people in town think it's redundant, in order to be able to proceed as a competitive applicant for these grant programs. So that is also something that's in the works. It's been slower than we would like it to for a variety of reasons. I'm certainly not going to point fingers. But these are things that we are continuously working on to put those puzzle pieces in place. And I think ultimately, that's what it is. My job is kind of putting puzzle pieces in place. So some of it is a smaller, like how can we get the community involved? How can we be building environmental stewards? And that ranges all the way up to, right, what are we going to do about flooding in Mystic? I can tell you earlier today, I had a conversation with our public works director about a large federal grant that if we apply for it, could be significant funding to help look at our vulnerable roadways. But why I say we might apply is even determining if we're really a competitive applicant takes hours of work. So we are in that process. We are always in that mix of looking at the next good opportunity. It's just sometimes that's not the quick and snappy thing to come and give you an update in a way that's easy to explain and understand.
And another project, actually, soon, I was talking to the manager about it a few weeks ago, Megan, working with our building officials' office as well as our planning staff. A number of months back, we had a visit from FEMA looking at our flood insurance program, the things that we're doing in town to stay compliant with FEMA. They had a lot of good feedback. They love how we're operating the program now, but there's a number of old things that we kind of inherited that we have to address, and we'll be giving an update to the council about that in the near future. But those are some of the other programs that, as Megan said, sometimes we come to you tonight to give you kind of an update on some of the newer, quicker, snappier things. There are a lot of other initiatives that we're working on that we could spend hours talking about, that it's good for us to get that word out to the public, to let them know we are working on these things. The Pervis pavement grant that she got, that's to plan for the future, to start retrofitting things from a stormwater perspective, which are going to help flooding. That issue in Mystic that you had said about the flapper on the pipe, that was identified through the Mystic Downtown Sustainability Resiliency Plan. So it's these things that unfortunately, it takes time for us to go and do a deep dive. And then it gives us, all right, here's our options of things to do. What's the easy low-hanging fruit? And then what are those more long-term things? And we try to look for funding options for both. And with existing staff, how can we start tackling some of those things? So hear you loud and clear. And I think soon, we'll actually come give you a little bit more of an update on some of the standards we're doing through just our typical building standards, some of our zoning stuff to prevent future damage from flood and how we can start adapting with that as well.
Yes, I would appreciate that, especially since we've had, you know, last winter, there was so much rain and all the flooding that was happening around town, and the roads were impassable sometimes for days. It was happening in neighborhoods. So I think that these are issues that our community wants to hear about as well. Not trying to minimize this, but I'd really like to have some of the discussion, at least to see the direction you're going in for some of these hard issues. Because I'd like to take my second time.
Cool.
Because I think that's what I'm hearing from community members, that they want those, like where are we with these? And I have talked to the town manager about it, and he's like, it takes time to get through the grants, and you had to plan all these things before you can get to those next steps to apply for things, to fix some of this. You had to have, show all the data of what's happening in our community.
Point of information?
Yes.
I thought we were on agenda item to the Go Get Out the Door update, not the Sustainability update.
I'm sort of combining both of them, sorry.
But we're off topic now.
All right, thank you. So I think I've had my piece, so thank you. All right, we're all set there. We're going to be moving on.
All right, thank you.
All right, up next is 2025-23 Town-Owned Property RFP Schedule, Grotton Heights School and Pleasant Valley School Information Briefing.
Still me?
Hi, Corinne Piazza, Economic and Community Development Manager.
Is it the one that says final?
Yes, thank you. Wonderful, thanks so much for having us tonight. As I mentioned, I'm Corinne Piazza and I will be walking through you. There we go, there are brief presentation this evening. Could you click the next slide for me? Thank you. All right, so we have a brief presentation this evening, it's just eight slides and it's simply to write, to provide an update on the status of the Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley properties since the RFP were posted and the steps that we've been taking along with the town policy disposition process. This includes the next step of the property sale review committee review, which Council Parker mentioned, we'd be covering. And this is just an informational briefing only, there's no action required this evening. Next slide, please. One more. All right, so to provide some background on how we got to the current step that we're on, in July 2023, the town council adopted a new town policy disposition process and in September of 2024, the town council approved the release of the Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley request for proposals. And these will be the first excess properties that are subject to this new disposition process. So additionally with that meeting, the town council approved the staff's administrative reformat of the RFPs. So these weren't material changes, but we did an administrative reformat to make sure that the RFP was designed to elicit very, very clear proposals and identify how every proposal is reaching town goals. In particular, making it a much more efficient process for when the PSRC and town council review those proposals. And in preparation for posting the RFP, our team worked with the town manager to identify those administrative steps necessary to make the process happen as well as coming up with a schedule for the PSRC and we'll walk you through that this evening. And in particular, identifying the clear objectives and outcomes for each step the PSRC would take. Next slide, please. So to update you on the RFP schedule that has taken place since we last saw you, the Groton Heights RFP was posted on October 1st and closed on December 2nd. We promoted it through a developer e-blast, through advertising at the Urban Land Institute, which is a national organization. We updated our website and we posted the RFP on the town and state procurement sites. We also hosted site tours for interested respondents in October. Pleasant Valley was posted on November 5th and it closes January 21st and we promoted it in the same way as Groton Heights and hosted site tours in November. And of note, we slightly staggered the posting of those two, two RFPs. That was to create enough time for developers to really propose a thoughtful response. It takes a lot of time and effort for them to really go through all of the requirements we've included, so we wanted to make sure they had time to respond to both as well as allowing for the administrative process for both. And after the RFPs closed, each property moves into the next step, which is the property sale review committee. Next slide. Okay, so one of my first tasks in starting here was diving into this new disposition process and creating a visual that we can all work from. It's a very complex process and I call these candy landboards essentially, so it's very easy to see where we are, what happens when, why, and how it plugs into the next step. So I know this is small and here, it's in your packets and you should have a printed version as well, but essentially you don't have to go through all that text now, it's just a visual depiction of overall policy. And of note for this evening is we have the whole policy broken down into phases. So again, it's easy to understand what's happening when. You have the first green one, which is property review, then you move into identification of public benefit preferences. And if you remember, you've accomplished both of these steps already for Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley. And now we're moving into the project concept and development partner selection and then it moves on to legal agreements and the project concept approvals. You'll also see either on your printout or on screen, the pink text was essentially what we're working on now and what we're updating you on. And that's why we have the we are here sticker there. And that's essentially the, the PSRC committee. Next slide, please.
Just point of information?
Sure.
Which one's the pink text? I'm sorry, I might be.
No worries. So under the Phase C, project concept and development partner selection, it's step nine A through 10.
Okay, it's, I just want to make sure orange then. Is that using pink? And I just want to make sure it says.
Oh, my apologies, it's highlighted pink on here, but not on the printout. So yeah, sorry about that.
Let me start on the right spot.
No, no worries. It's good we have the numbers as well, so nine A through 10.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so diving into the property sale review committee process and those steps that we're just referencing, the first one is the mayor selects the committee for each property and the overall roster is that includes two town council members, two RTM members, one economic development commission member, a town manager and an OPDS staff member. And it's helpful to note that this roster stays the same, but the people can change for each property. So essentially the makeup will be the same, but the people can change so that different folks are involved in different parcels. The PSRC also has a very clear schedule and objectives that we outlined based on the policy. There's four meetings total and those are on the, the screen as well. Essentially their first meeting is they do a preliminary scoring of the RFPs. It's important to note, these aren't final scores, this is just the process so the community members get very familiar with the content and can start seeing what they like, what they might have additional questions about. Then the second meeting, they discuss those preliminary scores and they select a shortlist for interviews. And they can also identify any clarifying questions they might have if they want a little bit more information or perhaps misunderstood something about the proposal. Step three is they do an interview of those shortlist candidates. And then step four is they discuss and select the final shortlist for recommendation to town council. And these meetings are managed through town manager's office and posted publicly with an agenda. We'll get, in the next slide, we'll touch a little bit on why those meetings or any meetings associated with RFPs are held in executive session. And then it's also helpful to note that everything the PSRC is using to review the RFPs is based on the RFP that was issued. So all of the public benefits that were identified as well as the scoring criteria all exist in that RFP and that's what the review committee is working from. So it's all pre-established and that allowed us to move very quickly and clearly through the process because they knew what they were, they were evaluating on as the town council had established already in the RFP. Additionally, Groton Heights currently is in the PSRC process. We finished meeting for this week and we anticipate being, bringing a referral to town council at the end of the month. Then Pleasant Valley, RFP closes on January 21st and it will follow the exact same process as Groton Heights. Next slide, please. Thank you. So additionally, as part of the procurement process, the PSRC members received a conflict of interest and confidentiality disclosure. And this is important just to identify that none of the members have a conflict of interest. This is legally generally defined as a member, excuse me, as a committee member or a member of their family would gain financially from selecting a respondent. So they verify, they go through the RFP, who's enlisted as officers for the project and then they verify whether or not they have conflict. Then they also are provided with a confidentiality reminder for the, the selection process and this is identified by Connecticut state law. And it's really identified to preserve the integrity of the RFP process and making sure there's a fair process for all participants and there really isn't any interference in the process and also they're not having to provide proprietary information in a public setting. And so this state law also ties to why any meetings associated with RFPs are in executive session. Again, it's based on compliance with Connecticut state law to ensure a fair process. And additionally, it's very advantageous to the town as well so that they can select the best offer. So John's used the example before where if you're, you know, selling your house, if, if all of the bids are on the table, you wouldn't really be able to choose the best one because it would be out there for what, you know, what the lowest offer was. So that's why that is in place and again, just based on Connecticut state law. All right, we just have two more slides. So diving back to that graphic, diving back into that graphic, we're currently in the PSRC process, again, that pink. And next up is highlighted in blue. And so this is where you'll get our referral at the end of January with the committee's shortlist recommendation and then you move into your selection process based on that recommendation. And that final developer selection is estimated to take about 60 to 90 days. Then once you do that, you, we move into the negotiation and legal agreement process. That's on the right side, that's also about 60 to 90 days. And this is where the teeth really are for the town. So everything that's been discussed and agreed upon is formalized in legal documents here so that we can ensure that what was agreed to is actually built. And finally, next slide, thank you. As we wrap up the PSRC process, again, you'll get the shortlist recommendation and then basically that will be a presentation for you. We'll move into executive, executive discussion to include a summary of the shortlist projects, including but not limited to the concept, the offer to the town and the public benefits that were accomplished. We'll also cover those who were not selected and why. And then next steps, the town council will discuss and arrive at a finalist list, or excuse me, a finalist, set a public hearing and then town council has a final decision and forwards that to the RTM. That is just a high level version of what comes next, just to get you prepared as we'll be returning with the referral for Groton Heights very soon. And again, this is just an informational briefing, there's no action required for you this evening, but we just wanted to provide an overall update on where the properties are in the process right now. And that's, that's our presentation.
Council Boarder.
Thank you. I will say this is definitely a major improvement from where it used to be. I, you know, want to thank Councilor McBride for chairing the property reuse committee referral that I had sent back a while ago, even though all of the stuff is not embedded in this in particularly, but a lot of the nuts and bolts are. It's a little bit of a different version, but some of the key points are there and, you know, for me, it's a win when some processes have been changed. So I think this is allowing folks to have a better flow compared to what we had before. So I think this is a start. It will, to me, it's going to be interesting to see where it goes. I just asked that all the slides tonight that were presented, if you could send those.
I just emailed them.
Perfect, along with the other ones from the other things, it'd be great just to have those as references, so I thank you for that. And, you know, I just hope that this process is a little bit more open, a little bit more of a, I don't know, just making, making sure we have like, you know, the RTM members involved and other folks a little bit earlier on. We'll see how this goes. I'm sure there's no perfect fix, but this is the first step from where we were before and maybe there'll be some tweaking or, you know, things that need to be tweaked along the way as we learn from these two properties that come off first. So I'm excited to see, I think it's important to get these properties back on the payrolls and, but I also think it's important that there's a process that's streamlined, that's effective, open and transparent. So I'm interested to see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the mayor, just a quick question, was there anything, I know you're like in the, more in the weeds of the Groton Heights project right now, is there anything that happened during the Groton Heights project that you can publicly disclose that you would possibly say change in the process so far now and kind of like, you know, adjust for, to make the pleasant, still being in compliance with the regulations, but maybe adjust for the Pleasant Valley discussion?
Sure. One item that we learned through the PSRC process for Groton Heights was we, we had our committee arrive at the shortlist and identify clarifying questions and we definitely, for the Pleasant Valley process, will allow a little bit more time there just for everybody to move a little bit more comfortably and apply those questions to the, to the shortlist so they have more time to respond. So we're, we're adjusting administratively as we learn throughout the process. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to try to avoid the repeat of working all Friday night and Saturday, finishing up those questions so we can get them out to the, the shortlist candidates and to the, back to the group for them to review in times.
Well, as the chairman of the Pleasant Valley Committee, I look forward to seeing those adjustments and going through the experience. I yield back, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Madam Mayor. Oh, Councilor McBride.
Thank you. I just want to commend the property reviews committee for the work they did, but also want to commend the efforts of the town manager and yourselves on that, that document and moving through the process because it seemed to me it's working rather well, so I just want to say thank you and appreciate everyone's efforts.
Thank you. Councilor Parker.
Thank you. I was going to say thank you when we brought the item forward, but I want to thank all the committee members. It was a pleasant, it was very pleasant working with everyone. And one other thing, when we presented questions, enough time for the committee members to come up with the questions a little bit earlier.
Yes, absolutely.
So that was, that was my only slight issue.
Great.
So just a short turnaround, but thank you guys. Everything was streamlined and it worked well and the group interacted. It was nice having each person be able to give their thoughts and view process on this and follow this guideline where we could see everything posted easily and we knew where we were when we were doing this process. And thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for your participation. The committee was really great to work with them.
Councilor Rusk.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate a little bit about what Councilor Parker said, this is a great, great document. And even when you, I watched the property reuse meeting, I know there wasn't much that you could watch, but it was very clear that you understood the process and it was very well explained to people watching how the process was moving forward. So I really want to say thank you for all the work on this. It makes it all very clear. The one thing that I had gotten in the past was a property or a buyer was identified and then it took so long for that to go from the buyer identified to it actually going to fruition. How has that changed and how long do you anticipate between when, when the town council approves it, it goes, you know, to hearing and all of that and then it actually is finalized? Like what type of timeframe should we anticipate?
Overall, we're aiming for the 60 to 90 days and I believe if, if you're referencing that Thayer Mahan property, I know COVID hit in the middle of that, which may have been a challenge, but much like we've been administering each section of the policy, we would have very set guardrails on that so that we're moving ahead and it doesn't just infinitely maybe exist. So that's great feedback to make sure that we do that and we'll make sure that we have those guardrails on there so that once a project partner is selected, we're moving through the negotiation as quickly as possible and finalizing everything.
And this whole process has been really kind of revamped a lot, you know, utilizing the new policy, but then Corinne took that, looked at the RFPs and really streamlined a lot of things. So I think what normally taken us a lot more time in the past, we've already cut months out of the process from where we normally are. The fact that, you know, the PSRC was able to meet so quickly, get through things, maybe a little rushed on those questions, but we'll fix that, you know, for Pleasant Valley, might add a, you know, extra week or two to the process. I, I think in the past, we weren't anywhere near where we were now, be, you know, being able to bring a recommendation of, you know, a short list, so not just one, but a list to the council on, you know, what we're looking at. And I think then you'll digest that, we'll get through that in a, a good process way again, you know, as Corinne said, kind of thinking about the objectives, the roles as specified from the RFP, looking at the, the, the policy. I think you'll see how seamless it is because of just kind of the format of how she structures things and it, it's been really great just working with Corinne on this and, and her leadership on it.
Thank you. I've said it in the past, I, that was the school my kids went to or my oldest went to, my youngest never got there. So it has been closed since she was in fourth grade and she is now a grown adult with her own children now, her own child now. So I thank you for taking this on, it was one of my main goals, getting on council was to get our schools that are not used, a, a plan and a, and a sale going for some of them. So I thank you and I'm excited to see what comes up.
Great, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Councilor Boarder.
Thank you. You know, I think it's also very vital too, because before, looking at the old plan, you know, it, there was like two people that sat on the whole committee that stayed on the committee from the council on, that were selected a while back and then we kind of were, here's our final offer, you know, here's, here's our, you know, here was the person that was selected and then the council at that point can either go for it or not, like there wasn't kind of, so this process I think really allows all of us to have a stake in it, you have your working group and then it allows for us to, you know, deliberate. And that was my, I mean, one of my goals of the referral for the revamping of the whole RFP was looking at ways to make it more inclusive, more open, more transparent. Granted, there's some pieces in here that didn't make it, there's some pieces that weren't in there that are added, that are wonderful, that were new additions to what we're, the original working group had. So again, it's a, it's a platform, it's a, it's a definitely a diving step off. And for me, I also too. And for me, I also too got involved a while back, wanting to make sure we, you know, utilize some of these properties as a person who's lived here forever and seeing these buildings sit here way before, I think, even this council flipped from the other council from seven years ago, they had buildings sitting way longer. And I think this council and the council before, we made some progress under the old plan, and we did get some properties up. So with that, I think this, it's okay sometimes to take a step back and relook at things and rethink what wasn't working. And that's not a bad problem to have, to make sure that something like this is working so well so far. So I thank you guys for all your efforts and, you know, for the previous folks that were, you know, kind of came into what was already the process that you were, kind of had to take on and use, you know. So I'm excited for this and, you know, like again, there's already been some tweaking, which I heard from Counselor Gajewski, so it sounds like, you know, there'll maybe be more along the way. You know, I'm not involved in the initial part of it at this point, but hope to be at the later point on other properties and things like that. But I do think it's very vital that we have a process in place. And when I sat on the committee with Counselor McBride, you know, we looked at other towns and neighboring areas when we had our brainstorming committee. And there's, you know, there's other places that had way more robust than this. And because they really valued, you know, I understand they want to make the money, but you know, you really want to make sure, because once we get rid of property that we own, we can't get it back. And then if it turns over later, we have no say in what it's sold to after the fact. So it is, it is, it is an investment of our community, and so it does take time. So I really do appreciate all the efforts, all the tweaking, and all the work that's going into this. And I hope that it's done in a much more open, transparent process, which will allow the community the opportunity to be involved, which was one of the criticisms before, is that they just didn't feel like there was a lot of people that were, you know, allowed to know what was going on earlier on. And I understand the whole, you know, confidential side of it, but once selected. So again, thank you for all your efforts, and I look forward to seeing how these two roll out and look forward to be parting of some of the other properties down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Merritt.
Yes, I think, you know, where I stand already on this is this vacant property that's not bringing anything into the grand list, let's pursue that in a shorter time than what we had before.
Great.
I'd like to say thank you to Counselor Parker for hearing that feedback. It is great to hear how the process is going because it is confidential. This is the first Emerald hearing of how the actual committee is going, so I'm really delighted to hear that. Just to give a little history, the process was created about three and a half years ago on our council. I actually worked with a member of the Mr. Girl School Advocates on this to make some changes to it and to increase some of the changes, as well as my own inputs. And I was happy to work with them after hearing their position. I think it is, the number of people serving on these committees, I'd like to thank everybody who's served on the committees and will be serving on the committees because it's taking additional time out of your life, and I appreciate that. I also would like to, as mentioned, about some delays that have happened in the past regarding contract extensions. I just want to stay on top of those. And then if things start to go, I'd like to re-have an extension instead of just letting things sort of fester a little bit, have a discussion on those so we don't get in the same kind of pickle again. I think, and to answer Counselor Rusk's question, what does the process take if, after we choose a developer to fruition, like actually a building being there? I'll let you know in the community, it takes years. It just takes a very long time because it's not just selecting the developer, but then we have to, they have to go through planning and zoning and wetlands and all these other items that they have to do with designs, and there's just so much to it. So it will take years, just like now that we're seeing Triton Square finally going up. It took years to get to that point. Although the RFP process is long and it's harder, I think it is very beneficial for, to our community, but it is a long and hard process. But from what I'm hearing, it sounds like this process has been streamlined from the original that we had gone through during the first round of RFPs. And I'm very happy to hear the feedback I'm hearing about how everybody seems to appreciate this new, this new way. I also want to let the community know that the mayor chooses who goes on the committees. I think the mayor can choose to put the same people on all the committees if they so chose to. I took the stand of wanting to put different people on different committees to have different input and different views. So, and to give more people an opportunity to be able to be part of this. So that was my choice to make. So I thank you for everything, and thank you for the update, and that was wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. It is 8:08, and I would like to take a recess right now. So, for about 10 minutes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Twenty six and we're back from recess. And up next is two zero two five dash ten, request for increased parking violation fines. This is on page fourteen and fifteen. I believe there was a change to the, um, the motion. Would you like to read it? Would the change, Councilor Gajewski?
Yes, Madam Mayor, would. Item two zero two five dash ten, request to increase parking violation fines. Motion to recommend a resolution increasing Groton's parking violation fine to fifty dollars.
That's not with the change, is it?
Oh, I, I totally just skipped over the change. We're gonna start again. Motion to recommend a resolution to set a public hearing for March fourth, twenty twenty five, for increasing Groton's parking violation fine to fifty dollars with a hundred dollar late fee to be noted in section eleven dash five six parentheses one of Groton's Code of Ordinance and increase Groton's fire lane parking violation to one hundred dollars with a two hundred dollar late fee to be noted in section seven dash three one of Groton's Code of Ordinance, so moved.
Second. Okay, moved by Gajewski. Second by Parker.
Do you want me to go a little?
Yes, would you like to?
Sure, sure. And Chief Fusaro apologizes he had a situation come up he wanted to be here, but I'll do my best to fill it. Um, I think as everyone know, downtown Mystic parking is one of the things that both the police department and my office get the most complaints on. And, um, we have complaints from shop owners as well as residents continuously. So we've been doing, making, the police department's been making efforts to, to try to help those issues there. Um, you may remember we added the new park, the municipal parking solution software in October, uh, using FY twenty five CIP funds. You know, nowadays you can't physically chalk a tire, this thing takes pictures, marks exactly where the position is. You come back, check it, and then you can print out the ticket right then. So it's, it's very good. Just so you could get the idea of, we've only been using it for a couple of months now, but in December we issued eighty-four tickets in this downtown Mystic. Um, forty-one percent in West Main Street, twenty-five percent on Water Street, eleven percent on Pearl Street, eleven percent on Bank Street, and twelve percent on other streets, especially gravel and library. Uh, forty-seven percent of those was for parking overtime violations. Thirty-six percent were no parking zone violations. We get a lot of that. And then ran, then seventeen percent just various other violations. Um, we've been using a lot of overtime downtown too for many issues, parking and others. Um, Mystic takes up a lot of police resources nowadays. Um, Stonington, you may remember, recall, Stonington had recently upped their parking fines to what we're proposing here, uh, to the, they upped it to the fifty dollars recently. We'd like to parallel that, you know, so we match in downtown, don't have, you know, very different, um, fees. And at where we're at now, at the twenty-five dollars, that's just basically people think that's just like going to the parking lot and paying, you know? So it doesn't have much impact, so that's why we get so many violations. So at the rates we're at now, it just doesn't make, it's not a big disincentive, so we'd like to increase that. But at this time, we're just looking to hold a public hearing and then, of course, the chief will be here to present that night.
Okay. Councilor Merritt?
Yes, to the town manager. Is there any, uh, figures on the return on the parking tickets handed out?
On how much money's being paid?
No, the percentage of tickets handed out as opposed to people that have paid them.
I don't have it with me, but I could certainly, we could certainly get that.
A lot of people are from out of state and they might just be here for one trip and they're just gonna blow it off.
Right. I can certainly get that.
Thank you.
Councilor Portelon?
Um, I think it's great, you said this is gonna be just a public hearing that we're just setting the motion, is that what the motion, yeah? I think it's important, I think we should kind of match, it makes no sense to be different across the bridge. And, yeah, you're right, twenty-five dollars to park in the wrong spot is about the same as parking somewhere else, so it, it seems like a wash. So I, I do think, you know, it would be good to get the public's input on this and, uh, see if we can at least match the other side of the bridge. Thank you.
Councilor Gajewski?
How often are they enforcing? Cause eighty-four seems relative, like are they enforcing on weekends only? Are they enforcing on week, every single day of the week?
Well, of course, if we put more people down there, and we only have at this point two of those soft, of the machines, we'd like to get a couple more so we could do more, you know, and out and about also. So it's a little limited, it's of course the most activities in downtown. That's when you're seeing people lock and, block people's driveways when they park, that kind of thing. It's just not as big an issue. It is an issue somewhat, but it's a, during the weekdays, but it's a much bigger issue on the weekends.
That's my only question, I'll go back.
Okay. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the mayor, to the town manager. Do we offer, do we write parking tickets on other parts of town?
Yes, just not near as many in other parts of town.
So would this ordinance then apply to the whole town, not just?
Well, except for, yeah, like, except for the city and GLP, yeah, yeah. Yes, it would.
So this would apply for everywhere?
Yes.
Okay, all right. No, I'm generally in favor, I think, match it up to Stonington and, and, um, I'm okay with it too, so, and I'm fine with the public hearing.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you, just a quick question. Do we know how much increased revenues this will bring into the town, just a rough estimate?
I don't know, if, and we can ask that.
And I'm in favor of it.
Once I know the percentage of, um, people who pay, we can probably extrapolate some.
And just a question, do we need to set a date or does that get set?
That was part of the motion, uh, March fourth.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry. March?
March fourth.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Melissa.
Councilor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the mayor, to town manager. Has towing entered the, entered the equation yet?
Yes, but not often. I'm actually been talking with the chief about doing more. Our officers are very nice and they like to give, you know, like I've seen many times where somebody will be parked where they shouldn't, they go track the person down. Like, I'd like to be a little, personally, a little more aggressive on that, but, um, you know, people don't love that and then we get a lot of complaints when we do it. But we do it occasionally, especially if it's an egregious, you know, thing, completely blocking someone. It's amazing, people will completely block the entire opening to someone's driveway. It's crazy. And very obvious opening.
That should be an instant tow.
Yeah, that's a, that's an instant tow.
I think one on Main Street every so often during the height of the season.
Yeah, yeah.
Just everybody, all the ducks getting over, oh, oh, they're towing.
Yep, I totally agree.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think this also goes with one of our, um, goals as council, um, to work on some parking issues and, and I would, uh, welcome this discussion. So let's take a vote on two zero two five dash ten, request to increase parking violation fine, public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions. All right, that passes nine to zero to zero.
And I will ask the chief for that information that was requested.
Sounds wonderful, thank you. Up next is two zero two five dash one seven, Municipal Veteran Services Officer Representative. This is on, hold on one second. Page twenty? Page twenty? Oh geez, I went by that, I'm sorry. This is on page twenty and, uh, Council Joan, Jones is going to, um, do a presentation for us.
Okay. Um, twenty twenty five dash seventeen, Municipal Veteran Services Officer Representative, no motions made in advance of this. So this, um, presentation came out as a result of our efforts during the, the Veterans Memorial Committee, when we discovered that a law had been passed in, um, Connecticut, or changes in the law had been passed in Connecticut that made it, um, that you had to have a Veteran Services Officer or a representative or a, a, um, committee to deal with your veterans' issues. So we realized we had a person at that time, we were re-compliance, um, out of Human Services, but we realized that we're a veterans' community and we have a lot of veterans here and, um, we realized we needed to serve our veterans better with a bigger program. So that started me off down on the road to figure out, um, what we had, what we're doing, and, um, so that gets us to tonight. Um, the, the act, which you have a copy of in your packet, um, is set up to assist veterans and veterans dependents on accessing services. And I, you have the whole packet in your, in your packet, I'm just gonna highlight certain parts, parts of it. Coordinate activities from public funding, cooperate with national, state, and local government, um, available. Uh, one of the things it mentioned was having a veteran, uh, veterans in person, be able to service veterans in person, telephone and mail. File with the municipality every month a report of what they're doing and then complete a Veterans Benefits Program course, um, which I did earlier, uh, in twenty four. So just to give you a little background, um, state of Connecticut has about a hun, and these are pulled from census data, and depending how you look at the census data, it kind of moves around, but this is sort of the average. We have about a hundred and thirty thousand veterans in Connecticut. New London County is the largest county, probably because of the Navy Base and the sub-base and veterans retiring here, is about ten percent of them live in New London County. Groton, about eleven percent of our population, or about, um, thirty-one hundred veterans are, um, serviced, are, are here, live in the town. Um, so at the moment, how do veterans find out about their information? It's really all over the place because the veterans are, there's a huge variety of different kinds of veterans. There can be veterans who just do one or two tours, there's veterans who do it for a career, there's veterans who are in war, um, there's ones who are not in war, there's ones who just have disabilities, it's really all over the place. And so they look for services in lots of different places. Um, the two primary is through the VA, Department of Veterans Affairs, and then the second is through, which I didn't realize until I started this, the state of Connecticut has a Connecticut Department of Veterans Affairs. Um, and then they find information from lots of other places, VFWs, coffeehouses, American legions, the Elks, here in Groton have a huge program, um, helping our vets. So vets are eligible for a number of benefits from the national, it's health, disabilities, uh, emergency care, that kind of thing. The state of Connecticut, it's more focused on education benefits, employment, um, tax exemptions, retirement, those kinds of things. And the number we can figure out here in Groton, that we're able to get some numbers on, that we have been assisting about a hundred to a hundred and twi, twenty-five veterans a year, and we figure out we have three thousand veterans. We also maintain a veterans' board, we assist with food, rent, utilities, refer veterans to state and federal programs. Um, the TVCCA hosts the coffeehouse that's held at the library and twice a month, and in the Mystic Congregational Church, twice a month, they just move them around. Um, so the position that we're looking to talk about is there are sort of three positions. One's a veterans' community, a veterans' committee, which we're not talking about. There is a Veteran Services Officer and a Veteran's Services Representative. So, um, the main difference between these two is a Veterans Representative points to things. You can go here, you can go there. And I went and got the training and the certification, uh, last summer. This is the packet of information, it was an all-day workshop to be certified. This is the training that's run by the state of Connecticut up in Rocky Hill, um, there's about a hundred and twenty-five people there. It was really a very, very interesting, and it goes through all the different services that the state does. Um, the Veteran Services Officer is a higher level and that's a person who can help with forms, can, um, can help advocate for a veteran, can go do a lot more stuff, so they can do benefits, advocacy, representation, appeals, tracking survivor benefits. So, um, this present, this proposal is to look at a Veterans Services Representative because it's just a place to start. This is the book, Federal Benefits for, from the federal government of benefits that we have. And there's a chart I put in here of duties and roles for veterans, uh, representatives and veteran services officers, so you can, can look at that. The key statement for veterans' representatives is, I don't have the answers, but I know where I can find them. If you just, that's the philosophy of veterans' representatives. So with all that said, I have a number of recommendations of where to go. One of the key things to remember for all veterans' assistance and services is that it should always be free. And wherever a veteran goes for services, do a VA, a coffeehouse, the state of Connecticut, wherever they go, those services are free and it guides them to where they need to go. Um, most vets and families don't know where to start and a lot of vets don't use, utilize these services for twenty or thirty years after they've left the service. So they just don't need it, uh, they just, they kind of, their situations change, their medical situations change, and that's when they start to use it. Vet reps are versed in some of these things. Uh, qualifications for a Veterans Representative is that it needs to be a veteran. I went through this whole training, I've gone to coffeehouses, I've talked to all these people, I could not do this job. I know nothing about being a vet because I don't have the mindset of being a vet. So it has to be someone who has, has been a vet. And preferably someone who has gone through some kind of disability, cause many of the vets have disabilities and having that knowledge is very helpful. They also need to go through the training, that's the minimum required for, in the state of Connecticut, um, they should be, be able to meet in person, have an office, an office that they can lock because there are sometimes are sometimes tip requirements. They also should be able to move around, go to the different coffeehouses and events and things like that. Payment on vets, on these services reps, if it's through a municipality like Groton, you might be a part-time person that gets paid, it's part of their job, they're just assigned a section. A lot of these, these people, the vets that do this are volunteers, they do it out of just love of being a vet and trying to help, and they're pretty amazing people. But I, I think, my recommendation is to find someone that's part of a, you know, that's part of, of the town, works for the town in some way, but that's to be determined. Work environment, have a location and an office, I think it's by the HIPAA, have the ability to be on the phone. People can come and kind of meet. I also, a lot of the vets are older, and the web is beyond a lot of their capability to kind of understand and deal with, but I think this approach should be a blended approach of a person and a veteran services. So recommending an upgrade to a page on our town website with just the links and things. It's often, it might be their kids that are helping them, it might be themselves, they're younger, they know what to do, but just should be resources, and just shows our commitment that we, if people are Googling what does Groton have, you'll end up on that page. So. I put an example in here of the Somers, Connecticut website. This is, up until this change in the law, there's very few places that veterans can actually go that's run by municipalities. Somers, Connecticut, up near the Massachusetts border, caters to about seven or eight towns, they cater to 3,000 people a year. And basically, what I gave here is just, I pulled this off of their webpage, and I edited a little bit, it's just the kinds of services and things that vets need. So everything from getting Cold War medals, noteworthy public services, prescription enrollment, education training, women's veteran outreach, government phones, government widows, emergency assistance, it just goes on and on. There's a lot of services, and there's sort of two sections of this. So I just put this in here so you can see sort of the depth and breadth that somebody might need to kind of know and appoint, but also, it could be easily built into a webpage with links, and then you could have both. So, so that's basically what I am presenting, and my recommendation is to, it's still to be determined where, and I know talking with town manager Bert, where do we host this Human Services in Thrive 55, an office needs to be somewhere. And where it sits is, like, probably town managers will figure that out. And I sort of recommend we start slow, we start to build it. Another component in this is that there's a marketing component, so it's marketed through our social media, our websites, our, you know, posters, our different outreach places that we go. I think once this gets out, and the vets in this area see that we have something, I think then we'll get people that will come. But I also think we'll get people from other towns, too. So it'll, we're the, we have the most vets of the, in the entire area of Connecticut, this area is right here. So I think we need to do something. So that's my presentation.
All right, thank you.
Open for questions.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, to Counselor Jones, since it's his presentation. What is your recommendation? Because I wasn't clear, it wasn't clear. Are you suggesting that we hire someone, or are we suggesting we're going to do the volunteer first, and then move into that position?
I think my recommendation is to look at maybe existing town staff, that some part of hours of their job description. We had, our current, our previous vet, vet reps was the Human Services Director, so it was part of her job description to do that. So, but town manager.
Very little job. We wouldn't be able to do it with existing staffing, it'd have to either be a volunteer or a new employee.
It's, it's, it's done both ways, so it's sort of, it's the effort of finding a person, too.
So the other thing is, it would need to be someone who is a vet?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yes, they need to be a vet. That's, I think that's pretty much the requirement in the law, but it's just from my own experience of doing, researching it, a vet needs to be, it needs to be a vet.
And, and TVCCA does not have a formal person doing this now?
No. TVCCA does a really good job with their coffeehouses, it's a great share of information, and people come and do presentations, it's really, it's a, it's a great group, and they're, vets helping vets. So they're doing the pointing, but I think it needs to be something more firmly established, that there's a person with a name and a place, to be determined how we pick that, whether it's a volunteer or. And it's probably, none of these people work 40 hours a week, it's a 10 to 15 hour a week type thing. Two times a week, they meet in their office and they meet people. That tends to be the, what I've seen so far, so.
Is the goal to have someone for next year, and?
It would be nice, yeah. I mean, we're missing, this is the largest vet community in the state, and we are not helping them. And we're also required by the Connecticut, the change in the Connecticut law to have this person. We currently don't have a person, so.
But technically, we did, even though it wasn't a full-time position, it was a Human Services.
We're considered still in compliance because we're grandfathered.
So technically, we were in compliance. Okay. So this person will need to have a job description, and we would have to get Ms. Green involved through you, if we go the route of hiring someone. So if we're in the, in the middle of budget, get ready to start budget session now, is this the plan now? Have we decided that?
Now we're just seeing what the council would like.
Because it's a little short notice.
Right.
That's my two cents. It's, we're, get ready to hit the budget like now, and you're in the middle of budget season.
We could get something together for at least by the time, I'm leaning towards, it'll probably be Human Services, because I have room there. I'm not sure there's room, office space at the senior center, I need to look at that, but whichever it is, we could get something together for, by the time we present, anyways.
All right, I yield my time. Counselor Gieske.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Counselor Jones, because it was his presentation. I know, or actually, maybe I'm interrupting this one. I know you said the Somers one servers serves seven towns. Have we looked at other towns in the region? Because they would technically have to be in compliance as well, right?
They all do. The only one that I know that's really doing anything is New London, and then the main is Norwich.
Okay.
Yeah. Norwich is the, has the main office for this area, for the VA, I guess. But New London has been doing some things. It's lacking, and if you sort of search through towns, you'll find that almost very few have, have anything to do with this. You know, if you just search for veteran services, you'll, you won't find this listed item on their websites, so.
And back to the mayor, to you. Is New London's a part-time paid person? Is it a volunteer person, or is it a full-time person?
It's two people. I think it's, I'm not sure. I know they just recently expanded their office. It's in the Howard Road, is that the?
Howard Street.
Howard Street. It's, it's in the Shaw Medical Center. It's really, so I'm not positive on how they.
Okay. And how many, do you have an idea, through you, through the mayor, to you, do you have an idea of how many are volunteer, and how many are paid, like a percentage weighing kind of thing?
Of the people that I met when I went to the conference to do this, most of them were volunteers.
And, and back through you, through the mayor, to you, did you, did you go to any coffeehouses, or was there anyone that may have expressed an interest in doing this as a volunteer, or it's just out right now, and you weren't really kind of?
We went, went to the TVCCA one.
Okay.
Here in Groton. It's led by a person, the day that I went there, the Elks Club did a presentation, and they did, they do phenomenal veterans outreach with, for homeless vets and for all vets, but homeless vets is a big part of their mission. There's no one there, other than that's helping vets, which has often been how this is, this information is conveyed, through VFWs and, you know, centers like that. That's often how, just somebody sort of takes that role, but there's no one formal there that does it. But they all seem to kind of know, they share information.
And then through the mayor and manager Bert, how many veterans' services have we done previously, like, like veterans? Has anybody, like, used this program since the law passed currently that you're aware of, or kind of like, what's been the use of our current protocols for it?
Well, we're sort of the representative format. We don't get a lot, really, the senior center, because they, they get more of that population, they often help out where they can, you know, not as official reps, but they do what they can. And then each community's going to be different. For instance, there's a volunteer, like, in Ledger, but it's not even said office hours, it's somebody calls, they set up a time to meet them. There's just a lot less people there, so each place is going to be drastically different on the numbers. The one thing I wouldn't be as interested in is sharing a full-time position amongst municipalities, because someone has to take responsibility for benefits and retirement and all that. I've run into that before, it's not a, it's always a recipe for issues down the road.
Okay, personally, for me, I would prefer a, just start out with a part-time paid person, just because of our high density veteran population in the town of Groton, but that's just me, of where I'm at. So. All right, you'll back on, Madam.
All right, Counselor Wardline.
Oh, thank you. I'm actually really familiar with this program. I did some outreach with it when I was, we were stationed up in Maine, and I was a stay-at-home mom for quite some time, and the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard area has a, because of the retirees going to work at what's similar to EB. You know, it is important to realize that, that it says, you know, the Act requires that municipal veterans represented be a veteran or, or have particular experience in veteran affairs. So you could have a person who's retired therapist who worked on a naval installation that, you know, is proficient in this. So let's not preclude, let's not, I'm just saying, let's not isolate herself. A retired therapist or social worker who wants to volunteer, male, female, whatever, might, you know, this document I'm actually very familiar with, only because my father-in-law is 80, and so I've been, you know, reading it like the Holy Grail, see what things he is up for. You know, he's a retired submariner here, and he lives in Motville. They have some, not, you know, a lot of services there, but he's also, still gets on the Navy base, so he's able to access this through a lot of avenues on the Navy base. So I appreciate Counselor Jones for doing this, and it is true, there's a lot of different retirees, right? You have people who served, you know, in the reserves, you have people who've served 20 years, you have people who were only in for a short time but served during wartime. I mean, there's so many di, different types of veterans, which is absolutely true. And, you know, the veterans who have the military past to still get on base can get some of these services a little bit more easily, if they still live around installation. So I'm a, I'm a firm believer in why wait? I don't, for me, I don't care if the budget's coming or not. I think it's submarine capital of the world, and as, you know, a mom of two, I mean, I guess a veteran is even the people that are serving now, right? Like, because some people need these services. Like, I access these services if my son or, you know, were injured at any point, I have to call up the VA and I start to, I am the next akin to activate these benefits, for all types of things, Red Cross and what have you. So as also being an ombudsman at one point in time, I'm very familiar with these services as well. I say, let's start, anything's better than nothing. Like, we can look, I think what we need to do is cast out the need, right? Community doesn't know if we don't, there's probably someone up there that's, you know, just retired. I mean, don't forget, 20 years in the military, you can retire at like 39. And there might be somebody that's in between jobs right now that might want to take on this volunteer role, male or female, and then we can look at a part-time paid position after. Let's see where it goes. But I say, let's not wait. Let's get the volunteer position in effect, and we can look to move towards a paid position should we need it. If we can't get a volunteer, then we'll move towards a paid position. But I think that's where we start. I think we start, you know, grassroots, and then we can make, maybe even look for grants and things to help fund it for outreach and stuff. I'll take my second time after, unless I'm allowed to take it now, through the mayor.
You could take it now?
Sure. So again, this mental health is such a, you know, a huge thing with this population and folks. But it is as they age, you know, like, I think about my father-in-law who lives alone, and, you know, he's 80, and, you know, we are managing all of his, you know, benefits and things, and having to be proficient in all of this stuff. You know, you know, I asked him, not long ago, hey, did you apply for the tax thing? And he's like, I think I did. And I'm like, all right, I'm going to go check at the municipal building with you, let's go down there. You know, like, just, it's a lot to navigate. I mean, he doesn't walk as well anymore, he's 80 years old, so, you know, like, there's probably things he's not utilizing, just for lack of time and energy, you know. I like the idea of it being at the senior center, but I also can see, well, we call it Thrive 55 now, right? So that's even better. But also, the Human Services, I mean, I also think it could be in the old former Fitch Middle School building, you know, it really, you know, essentially located with a signage. Sky's the limits. But I think we start by generating an idea of what we want. I think it'd be great, through the mayor, through the town manager, I could request information, but if you could possibly request what New London's plan is, if you could get maybe just some information on theirs, since they have a little bit more robust that's close by. And I think that theirs is more robust, as I stated before, and other avenues, is they have the shelter, they have a lot of the clinics, the hospitals there, right? New London is the hub, it gets all of the needs of all of Southeast, you know, this area, because we don't have all of that. But I think we start now. We, we move, we act, we mobilize. We, you know, we don't wait for the money to be our barrier, we look for the volunteer. And how we do that as a council is completely up to you guys, but I just don't want to limit ourselves to let it be only a veteran, because there are a lot of people who understand veteran, you know, needs and, and things that can just be very knowledgeable. Any outreach coordinator that's done type of work, you know, again, can take that class, read this. A military dependent could have, you know, a very, you know, a former ombudsman, or other folks, you know. I just think we should open up the things, it doesn't, it doesn't limit us. But I think we can move quickly, and I thank Counselor Jones for doing this, it's something I'm passionate about, and, you know, I think it is vital, and I think, you know, if you build it, they will come. And I think you'll see people come from all other areas, like my father-in-law, you know, I might bring him out to talk to somebody. So I think we, we should look at this, and it shouldn't be something, you know, that we should wait on. I think, let's go the least expensive route, which is put the feeler out that we're looking, and then go from there. And if it really turns into something big, we can look at the pay scale. I do like eventually maybe getting a veteran, and we might be, it might be a moving target. We might have someone that does it for a year, because it's volunteer, then the next is the volunteer. You know, we can look at all of that as we go, but I think let's put the feeler out. Start now putting the feelers out, because it's going to take time, like the R and P, to get to where we want to go. And that's all I have. But thank you, Counselor Jones, for your work.
I'll wait.
Are you taking a second turn?
I was, but you have a first-time person wanting to speak.
Counselor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a veteran for the last 15 years, and a disabled one at that, I have trust issues. There are plenty of websites that are targeting veterans. We can help with this, and we can help with that, and are all for profit. They're going to help until they get their money. If we have a quote-unquote "government official", somebody who's being paid by the town, I feel a lot better going to that person. And I, I have trust with that. I mean, we, most of us spent a career in the military, we trust what we did, you know, to do the right thing, and we trust another veteran to do the right thing for us. So, yeah, it's a big trust issue for me, and I totally like the idea of even a part-timer on, on the payroll. Because I, I don't like the idea of volunteer, you know, if something helps, something happens, goes somewhere else, comes back and forth, you know, and then, then your level of service, you know, has ebbs and flows. Keep the same level of service with one person who continually is learning and doing a better job with every new task. That's all I've got.
I have the exact same concerns, yeah. I feel exactly as Representative Pacino.
Counselor? Counselor Merritt?
Counselor, sorry.
I'd like to agree with the town manager and Counselor Pacino, the fact that you have control if you pay somebody. If something goes wrong, you can holler at a volunteer. If he doesn't like what you said, he's saying, do it yourself and walk away. Now you're stuck, you have to start all over again. I grew up with a lot of Vietnam veterans, we went to school together, I know what their problems are. But if you don't have somebody paid and organized, then you're requiring a volunteer to do the organization, and if he can, he does, if he doesn't, he doesn't, and he just walks away. So I would prefer a paid position.
Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to Counselor Jones.
Thank you to Council Jones for, I know this was a lot of time. I know putting this together was a lot of time, your training was a lot of time, so I appreciate your effort. Thank you to Council Pacino for your service. As a wife of a veteran, I have to say I 100% agree with Council Pacino and the town manager and Council Mayor. This needs to be a full, it needs to be a part-time position, but it needs to be paid. I think, one, it's respect, two, it is consistency. And I'm, I've always been a little amazed that Groton does not have this already and actually very insulted on that fact because, you know, my husband's been out for quite a few years now and there is no place in Groton to get services. And for the longest time, the closest place was the VA hospital in New Haven and that is a long haul to get services. So I, again, thank you for bringing this up. I do believe this needs to be a paid employee. Where that employee ends up being, I will let the town manager, of course, determine that, but we need to show a little bit of respect to our veterans and, and give them the services that they need and deserve and our thanks.
Did you have a response?
I, yeah, just a general one. I just, a little bit to Council Boardland with her, with her sons and, you know, she's two sons who are veterans. You need to be in 90 days and you become a veteran. It's pretty short. Like, you only have to be there 90 days and you're, you're just not being able to access veteran services. So, you know, congratulations to your sons and the service they're doing to the country, but it happens very quickly. Council Pacino and I went to the TVCA Coffee House just to learn and I sat there with notebook just taking notes and he sat there watching me with the expressions on my face as these guys just laid out problems after problems after problems and... So it's a big, it's a big need. Sorry. I'm not sure why I took this on. You know, I have a grandfather who's a veteran, a father's a veteran, a sister's a veteran. So it's a, it's a military family, but it just seemed like we're missing something. And I think having paid, you know, a volunteer paid, it just gives us more power and it gives us more control and, and we can send them off to a conference to go do something and, you know. Though I am amazed at, I have probably 125 guys there and women doing this job. Almost all of them volunteers, so they're just doing it because they love it. They just love what they do for veterans. So you kind of pick up this enormous energy. So, yeah, that's my response. I agree with Council Boardland's comments too. I think they're all very pertinent and I think the volunteer method happened because no one was doing it. So we need somebody to do something and so that's what happened. But I think I, my recommendation would be to some kind of a part-time paid person that, that we can then build something around and we can work with. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. Thank you, Council Jones, for your, all your work. You can tell you put a lot of effort into it and I really appreciate it. I have a couple of different train, trains of thought here. One, I, I agree, there's definitely a need. I kind of liked the idea of, I was originally leaning towards volunteer, but you clearly made the points, all of you, that it seems most of you, it seems to make the most sense having a paid position, part-time paid position. So I would support that. My only question or comment would be is if it could be, you know, how many hours could we limit it to, to get to understand how big the need is? And I think Council Boardland mentioned that. Is it a 15-hour-a-week job? Is it 20? And I think once that person, he or she, is in the role, you'll be able to determine how many hours that person needs and maybe it does become, you know, more hours in a week or full-time. And I think we support them with, you know, the computer, the telephone, the access so people can contact them. So I would, I'm in support of that because there's definitely a need. I also had another thought. I'm not sure through the mayor to Tommy Andrew Burt if this is something that should be discussed with the Southeastern Council of Governments because it seems like there's a need not just here, but everywhere. And if it could be, and I don't know how you'd structure it, but based in Groton, because as your evidence supports, it should be in Groton, and maybe it's something where other communities would, would chip in. And I understand your concern about sharing services, but if it was a council government's role, you know, maybe it would not have to be the taxpayers of Groton paying for it, but provide the benefits to the Groton to do that. So I'm not sure if that's, if that's feasible or not, but just something to consider because it may be, it may be a full-time role, right? It may be a full-time role for the entire region. So that's just something I think, you know, sometimes regionalization makes the most sense for something as sacred as this, so, but I would support what everyone else is talking about as well. Thank you.
Did you want to respond about the CAG?
I can give it some thought. I would be, you know, if they were the employer. I've seen time and time again in my 30 years of, we take it on, a couple of places start saying we're not going to pay, then you're like, okay, then there's arguments and fights. You know, if it's going to be a full-time, you know, I, I wouldn't want to take on a region myself. CAG, if they want to take it on, it's great and we pay and, you know, we can house it. You know, we could provide space, you know, much like the courts, like the probate court that we do. I could certainly approach them and ask. In the meantime, I, we could work on a job description and costing for, you know, up to probably like up to 19 hours. You only take as much as you need, but, you know, the max would be 19 hours.
Council Parker?
Thank you. I don't want this to be taken the wrong way. There's reason why I mentioned the budget. Because this came out, it was approved in October 1st of 2023, but we're now getting it in 2025. And I know there was a lot of work behind this with Council Jones going to the courses and everything. But I thought we also had a committee. Did we not have a selection of five people, five groups that helped with this?
No, that's a memorial.
That's a war and memorial committee that doesn't do anything with benefits and...
Okay.
And I, and I have talked to them about it and they weren't, they weren't interested in taking this type of role.
Okay, but they're also an outreach that could know other people within the community as a group. Because I also said, saw where it says a committee can be put together too. So... It's the timing. If we're going to do this, we should have done it already last year. And how quickly if everybody, I see everybody wants to go that way to a paid position. I'm fine with that, but when are we going to be able to get this person on? Because it does take time to find someone. They have to be a veteran according to this. Or... How fast can you guys come up with the job description, get it posted and get somebody on board?
Well, the job description has to first be approved by the council before we can post it. We could, we could, you know, certainly within a few weeks, you know, we'll, we can rush it.
We can rush it, but then there's the selection process. So how fast and what is everyone's timeline? When are you basing this on and how soon do you guys want somebody in there? If the need is there, and it is, but we had someone in the office, Human Services office, to be an outreach, there are the phone numbers for an outreach. Yes, we can post stuff online. How fast do you guys want to get this done? And to make sure we have the right person in there? Because hiring takes a bit. Just throwing my sense out there.
Point of information?
Your question? On through the mayor to the town manager. I'm just trying to make sure I'm informing it as a question. It wouldn't slow anything down if we, let's just, I'm throwing out a random number. We said no more than 19, right? So that prevents benefits, but we said this position is, you know, $19 an hour. We could have a placeholder moving into the budget even though it's not filled. That's my question, right? We could, we could create the, I mean, the wording of this is pretty much in here for us, it's just cut and paste, but what the number is, we could, you know, vote on quickly and then, not tonight obviously, but you could hold that place and we would be anticipating that even if it's not filled in a budget cycle. Is that true?
I would, you know, we'd look at a few example ones. I would right away put in a holder, you know, to get it in there. And then we go through our process to see where, but, you know, we're probably pretty close to what we, you know, negligible difference for what we use as a holding.
Okay. All right, now this is my question.
We get the job description back to you with the costs. In the meantime, talk to CAG to see if there's any interest out there for that.
All right. Thank you for that.
All right, one more. Can I? Thank you. Have we also reached out to the naval base to see how they do everything and, because I know they had hired a person who helps people transition, is that the key word? Transition out? Because maybe they know someone who may be interested in the position. So I, I see different avenues. I just want to make sure we have the correct avenue. Thank you.
So I, I have talked a number of times to Captain Curtin, who's the commander of the naval base. They do have veteran services on the naval base. He's very encouraged, encouraging of this idea and the program. And they also like it because it, it's about recruitment, because when people leave the service, they know there's some kind of service past it. So he was very supportive of this. I have his card, I can give him a call when we, if we get to the States and maybe there's someone they can recommend. They do have some services there, but there's a lot of vets here that can't go there and do it. So he's, he was 100% behind when I have talked to him a couple of times. I just talked to him recently on this and he was, he was encouraging. So that's a, that's a great avenue. Maybe they do have a person that could, we could, we could reach out as, once people decide, yes, we can move forward, so. But he's only there another year, so I, I would, I'd like to jump on, you know, that is, is offered to help, so.
Okay, thank you. And as a family member who, my grandparents got him here because of the Navy and other family members who are part of it, and thank you guys, thank you all for, who have served and who are continuing to serve. But I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing at the right point in time and I don't want to rush the process without having the correct person in place. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take my turn. And I want to talk to, at first to Council Jones to tell you that I was so happy to be able to help you when you first began researching this. We had many talks and discussions about all the possibilities that this could bring to our community. And I want to thank you for recognizing this new requirement that's instituted by this date and how beneficial I think this will be to our community. I also want to state that many veterans have no idea what their benefits are and I will say the VA does not make it easy to figure out your benefits. Mr. Burt, were you able to speak to the Ledger mayor? Because they do have a representative up there.
I, I did. He's, he's, he doesn't knew many hours. He, you know, he doesn't do schedule hours. He, a couple of times a week will meet with somebody. He didn't think it'd likely be an interest there, but he would, he was supposed to get back to him, heard back from him.
Okay, because this also, like as has been mentioned, it could be shared with other communities. What is your thought on it potentially being a contractor? Because some disabled vets cannot be employed, but maybe they can take a stipend or they could be a contractor. What do you, what are your thoughts?
As they pass the IRS test for contractor, that's fine. You start getting into trouble though when you give set office hours, that can be an issue. So it must be like an on-call basis for that, but certainly something we could explore.
All right. And I just want to, I'm just going to go and, and tell a little story that my father is 100% was, was 100% disabled veteran from Vietnam. We utilized town services when he passed away from Agent Orange and the assistance that was provided to my mother and I were invaluable. On this page over here, there are a list of some items and I will tell you that just the clarity that they gave us and what we needed with even the death certificate and what we had, additional benefits that we didn't know about for homebound veterans, caregiver support programs and services, awards and medals that my father could have received, survivor benefits for the widow, burial benefits and grave registries, markers, flags, headstones, veteran funeral and memorial services, information on veteran pensions, elder services for veterans and spouses. I mean, these were just absolutely invaluable. And because I flew into the town, I couldn't just go to a coffee hour. It was like I was there for a specific time and I needed to meet with somebody that, like a certain time, so I had to make an appointment. So it was just so valuable to me to be able to go in and sit down and they helped us. Like, you don't have any idea how much they helped us and how much we appreciated that. And I will say that my mother, who is the widow of the disabled veteran, has called Human Services and has asked for assistance and they don't actually have the information to really be able to help her with the questions that she had. I don't think they are as knowledgeable because they may know some, but they aren't, they were not veterans. So I am, my heart is in this. I am in full support of however this council goes. I think from what I'm hearing, most everybody here is in support of it. How we get there is the question. Would you be able to put it into your budget, something for this upcoming budget? Or is it, are we a little late?
No, I can get something in there and we would start working on the job description, pricing it out. In the meantime, I'll reach out to the CAG. I'll tell you with the CAG, that's likely a many months, you know, process. So I don't know how quick we hear back on that one, but I could also look at the contractor and present, you know, option and maybe give you a second option when we come back.
Okay, that sounds great. And I will say, talking to some residents in our, our community that were veterans that, as you've stated, 20 years later, they're recognizing that they can get benefits or even later and they're now just recognizing this and getting them. And it just is astonishing to me and because they talked to the right person that knew some information and they didn't realize that they could. I've had my neighbor reach out to me asking me questions because I knew things because of my own father. These are, it's, I'm amazed that we have not had something like this already and I am excited that we could put something like this together and help the veterans in our community, especially because we are a veteran Navy-based community and they help make our community. So what, what do you need from our council and what do you think the next step should be, Mr. Burt?
I'll put some information together and come back to you. I, I feel like I have enough input. I, I think I understand.
All right, that sounds wonderful. Thank you so much and thank you, Council Jones, for all the work that you put in because I know it's been a long journey and...
It was a lot of your, we had a lot of conversations on this.
Yes.
And, you know, your passion for what went on with your father helped fuel this. And for a lot of veterans right now, it's the Gulf War veterans are the ones who are coming, they're the ones who are now starting to reach the needs for all these services. The World War II ones are almost out and there's still Korean ones, but the Gulf War guys are the ones that the women are now here too, so it was, it was really...
And I just wanted to put two more cents in there. In our discussions, the federal government has opened up the PAC Act, so it has opened up benefits to even more veterans that they may not even know that they are, you know, qualified for such benefits. So, um, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Point of information?
Your question?
Not really a question. I want to give information. A lot of these benefits are not retroactive. So if you wait 20 years, you're not getting 20 years of back pay. It's not going to happen. So if we get these Gulf War guys and get them taken care of sooner than later, they're going to be better off.
Great, I agree. Thank you. Okay. Up next, 2025-23, Groton Housing Authority Discussion, Potential Executive Session. We have our town attorney here. And we have a motion. Do you have the motion? Council Parker, do you want to just read it?
I make a motion, hereby move that the members of the town council, committee of the whole, town manager John Burt, town attorney Christie Kelly and attorney Rich Cody go into executive session pursuant to General Statute, Section 1-206B for the purpose of discussing strategy and negotiations related to pending litigation and/or pending claims concerning the Groton Housing Authority. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Guy Duski.
Council Boardland? This is potential executive session. Is there some type of thing to talk about first before or, I mean, it didn't say definite, like we are going. I didn't know if there's anything else that we can talk about prior to.
That's how we always put it. We always say potential, but in, excuse me, because it involves potential litigation, all we'll do is that. all we'll do is that motion. That's all we can do right now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for clarifying.
All right. All right, let's take a vote on this. 2025-33, Grattan Housing Authority Discussion, Executive Session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that's going to pass 9 to 0 to 0. And I think we could take a little recess here while we get set up for executive session. It's 9:22. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Hooray, it is 11:20. We are back from executive session. That was a long one. We have a motion. Councilor Jones, would you like to read the motion?
Motion to direct the town attorney to send correspondence on behalf of the town council to the Groton Housing Authority notifying of potential claims and litigation with such a letter to include requests for certain information. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Parker. Okay. Councilor Borland.
I just want to ask, is there a timeframe for this information that should be included in this motion?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
I just want to make sure it didn't get missed, is all.
Is this on?
It's on.
Is the question as to the timeframe for the sending of the correspondence or the receipt of the information?
Receipt of information, should that be in the motion as well?
Sure, we could put it in the motion if you'd like to have it in the motion.
I just think it paints a clear picture of the information we're requesting, what our turnaround time is, so it's on there on the record and it's part of our motion.
Yeah, I think the turnaround time that's anticipated would be one week from transmittal of the letter.
I just ask for that amendment if I could get a second on that.
Second.
Seconded by, was it Gajewski?
Yep.
So I'm adding to request for certain information with response.
Within one week.
All right, and that's what it was.
Yeah, within one week of transmittal of the letter.
One week of transmittal.
Yeah, might, wouldn't be one week from today.
The amended motion was made by Borland, seconded by Gajewski.
Can you just read it one more time?
Motion to direct the town attorney to send Motion to direct the town attorney to send correspondence on behalf of the town council to the Groton Housing Authority notifying of potential claims and litigation with such letter to include requests for certain information with response within one week of transmittal of letter. Seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on the amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. It passes nine to zero to zero. We will now vote on the amended with the main. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Bordelain, seconded by Gajewski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. We are adjourned at 11:23 p.m.